Good evening. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting on January 27, 2020. We are here at the multipurpose room in the fire facility. My name is Donald Campbell. I'm the Chair of this Board, and I will let our Board and staff that are with us introduce themselves today. Why don't we start with you, Stuart, please?
I'm Stuart Hurd. I'm the Town Manager.
Good evening. I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening. Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening. I'm Jim Carroll.
Hello. I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening. Chad Gordon.
Nancy Live in second chair.
Okay. So our first order of business tonight will be to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you be willing to lead us tonight, please? Thank you.
My Pledge of Allegiance is that we are the United States of America and choose a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you one and all. So the first order of business tonight is a public hearing, which we are having for a very slight adjustment to the TIF boundary. Dan, would you like to kick this off for us, please?
Thank you. Yeah, this should be very quick, I hope. So you all will recall that we did form about a year and a half ago a Tax Incentive Financing District in Bennington, and that district has a specific boundary that's approved by both the Select Board and the State Board, the VEPSCI Board from my progress council. Pursuant to their rules, if there is any change in that boundary, regardless of how minor, it's considered a change that needs to be approved by both the Select Board and by the VEPSCI folks. So I am before you this evening requesting that you approve a very minor change. Just a little background on why that change occurred in the boundary. When the property that is now the Tri-State Area Federal Credit Union was under contract to be sold to those folks, it was discovered that a portion of the Elks, Bennington Elks Lodge's driveway was on their property. Everyone had assumed that the driveway was on the Elks property, but when it was surveyed, it was discovered it was not. So to correct that prior to the sale, a boundary line adjustment was made to make sure that the Elks, to include the Elks Lodge driveway on the Elks property itself. That change resulted in a change of acreage of .14 acres, so about 6,000 square feet was transferred from the Tri-State Area Credit Union property over to the Elks. Unfortunately, that boundary between the Elks and the Tri-State Credit Union is also the TIF district boundary, so when that boundary changed, the TIF district boundary needs to change because you can't bisect properties on a boundary in the TIF district. So really, in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it did not result in any change of value for either property, so there's no change in the value within the TIF district. Everyone had kind of assumed that the boundary line included the driveway in the Elks property anyway, so values were based on that in any case. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you do not have any, I would just ask for approval of the revision of the TIF district boundary as presented.
So I think we should probably move this through pretty quickly, but my one question would be, is there any way we could do this as sort of a blanket approval to follow parcel lines?
Excuse me?
Is there any way we could do this as a blanket approval to follow parcel lines?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. That's all I need.
The regulations are clear. They don't, even if it's even less, even more minor change in this, it is considered a substantial change that needs to go through this hearing process and then up to VEPSCI. They didn't contemplate these real minor boundary line adjustments.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so let's, any comments from the Board? Any questions from the Board?
No.
Any comments or questions from the public? Okay. I would look for a motion then to advance this.
So move.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to approve this point one for adjustment to the TIF boundary district. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for that. Let's hope there aren't too many more of those. The next item on our agenda is to talk about the consent agenda. This is the minutes of January 12th, the supplementary addendum, January 11th, the supplementary addendum to January 11th, and the minutes from January 13th, and the warrants as circulated. Assume you've all had a chance to talk to Stuart about your questions, but if you haven't, now would be a good time to bring those up. Anyone like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? All set? Okay. So all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Unanimously carried. The, as far as agenda goes, I should say, I don't think anybody is here for this item. We did talk about trying to put the recreation priorities on this agenda at our last meeting during the agenda setting meeting. It's a very full agenda. We were unable to fit it in, so we'll be looking towards February 10th, I think, as time to pick up that conversation, right Stuart? I think that's what we said.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we were going to try to push that back into March, but...
Okay. All right. Well, we'll talk more about that when we get to agenda setting. Okay. Public comment. So this is a period that we open up to the public to tell you what's on your mind. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please, and not to make any insulting or derogatory comments about other people. And first person on our list tonight is Mr. Hoyt.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, Kevin Hoyt. I'm a lifetime citizen of Bennington. This is regarding, I guess, the Town Manager's editorial in the Bennington Banner last week. And I'm going to start out with the letter regarding election fraud that the Secretary of State sent the, this Select Board. And again, first, this is a Secretary talking. First, I want to be clear, the Secretary of State's office has no investigation or enforcement authority in regards to election fraud. Now, we're going to jump to Stu's commentary, where again, individuals, he's talking about me, my name's Kevin Hoyt, Stu, in case you forgot. I've been accusing the Clerk, the Select Board, and the Town Clerk and others of voter fraud in the 2018 election. This in spite of an acknowledgement from the Secretary of State's office that no voter fraud occurred. That is an evidently fraudulent statement, I think is misleading, so I'm asking for a public retraction and clarification. Later on in the same commentary, Stuart says the checklist maintained by the Town Clerk is the checklist of record. Again, we have several people that are not on that list either that did vote. They're not on either list, so there's still a problem. Discrepancies between the two documents do not matter. I'm going to need a little more explanation on that, too. As Mr. Hurd claiming there's no need for the Secretary of State, it's beyond logic, and he ends with there's no voter fraud here, which again, you guys don't know because no one refuses to lurk, to look. So I'm going to go back to the Secretary's letter. Again, number five, if you guys want to reference it, says, "As you know, the Bennington Board of Civil Authority, the BCA, has primary responsibility for maintenance of Bennington voter checklist. My office," referring to the Secretaries, "has no authority to add or remove names from the voter checklist of any Vermont town or city. The BCA has the sole authority to do so." Again, now I've given you guys the law. The only person that can call a meeting is our Clerk, who I am accusing, and you guys, the Select Board.
Mr. Hurd, I'm going to ask you to wrap up in a minute.
Sure. So again, my request is I'm going to ask you guys to do your jobs, the thing that we pay and elected you to do, and call this meeting. And again, at this point, I'm asking this to be led by federal, outside of Vermont State, federal investigators, because I don't trust you. Thank you.
Second comment from Matt Wiley. Have you got your name right there, Matt?
Willie.
Willie. Sorry about that.
My whole life. Thank you. I'm just going to just read kind of what I wrote, so I don't get off track and off topic. But I'm Matt Willie. For people that don't know me, I own Vermont Dough's Buck Stop and the Avocado Pit. I employ over 75 people in this town. I get asked daily to donate, to give, to whatever, and I usually do it. And I have to say, I'm starting to get a little frustrated with this town in a whole. And I won't take up too much of your time on the tax issue, because I know you guys are going to be discussing that later. But just to give you kind of a glimpse of what I see the business world looking like right now in Bennington, I talk to a lot of people on a daily basis with all three of my businesses, and that's not just people just bunkered up to my bar. That's real business people in this town that are very concerned with not being heard. And to be honest with you, two of the businesses that I've been talking to are looking to leave the town, and one of them will blow people's minds when they close their doors, and it's scary. And so I don't usually say much, but I figured I have to get up here and just kind of say my piece, the three minutes that I have, and I am just nervous. I'm nervous with, I'm not from here. I've been here for 20 years. I went to SVC. My wife's from here. But just going back in history on some of the decisions that have been made in this town, you know, going back to the bypass, or, you know, last year's construction, that was a disaster in front of my restaurant. You know, the bridge closing in front of Buck Stop in a couple of years, that's going to really shut my business down. That's going to be 12 people that won't have jobs for two months, and that's the truth. And if that goes longer than that, that could, that could be bye-bye for Buck Stop, because you only make money a couple of months out of the year. So if something happens in the what-ifs that I don't think you guys answered happen, I'm in trouble, and other people are in trouble. And just to touch on the tax thing real quick, I implore this tax, if it is, if the majority of it has to do with marketing our town, which I didn't hear or see in anything that I read. So I really hope that goes towards that. And anyone can say, you know, that, you know, the people that are voting, the 2,000 people that voted, you know, last year, that their tax bill is going to go down, that's really not true in the real case, because they're going to be paying a lot more for my pizza and for other people's products, and I can't go up anymore on my food, guys. I can't. And with minimum wage, family leave, all that stuff coming down the pipeline, it's just running small businesses out of this town, and out of Vermont a whole, to be honest with you. So I just kind of want to say my piece. I'm open to meet with anybody at any time. Please talk to me. I know you guys have an impossible job, and you guys can't please anyone, everyone. But thanks for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I have your phone number. I'll give you a call later on about this. Okay. So we are going to move on to the transportation issue, the Silk Road intersection alternatives. And this is sort of an interesting project, so let's see. Who have we got here, Dan? Would you like to, who wants to do introductions? All right. Give us a little introduction here.
So, boy, the Silk Road intersection with Bennington College and 67A has been a high accident location for many, many years. The town has urged the state of Vermont, since it's a state highway, to improve that intersection. Over a decade ago, we had, we thought that we had a solution when a roundabout was chosen as the preferred alternative for that intersection, and the state began the process of designing that roundabout. It's a long story, but it didn't happen. But here we are, over a decade later, and the state is, has agreed once again to take a close look at that intersection, propose some alternatives, and move towards improving that intersection. Towards that end, the state did hire consultants to take a look at that, and those folks are here. I'm going to let them introduce themselves. They're here tonight to present that alternatives, and I'm sure they'll be able to explain much more clearly the process for all of this as we move forward through the, through the V-Trans process and the federal process to get this intersection improved.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please introduce yourselves. Here we go.
Good evening to the Board and the public. I'm Tim Higginson. I'm a project engineer with WSP. I have with me Rich Tatro, who's the project manager at WSP, and Mike LaCroix from V-Trans, So we're here tonight to talk about the Madison Road, Rice Lane, Silk Road intersection on 67A. The agenda tonight that we want to overview with you is provide a quick update of where we're at with the project development, provide a project overview, give you an update of some of the conceptual alternatives that we've developed, discuss the impacts of these alternatives, and then review an evaluation matrix we put together to, to take a look at side-by-side comparison of the alternatives. Because we don't want to make the assumptions on our own, we want to solicit input from you as well and anything we may have missed. And ideally, we want to identify a town-preferred alternative, but in talking with, with Mike, we understand there may be some correspondence back and forth with that, so we'll work through that aspect of things. I think probably everybody in the room is familiar with the location. One thing to note about this image is that this is a little out of date. They have not updated the aerials for the Ninja Path update, but as we all know, there is the proximity of the Bennington College Road entrance and Madison Road, as well as Silk Road, creates a very difficult situation in here. We're very familiar with having talked through the local concerns meetings and reading the previous work from the studies that were done back in the mid-'90s. I'm very familiar with a lot of the moving dynamics of this area. For the project development process, I want to turn it over to Mike real quick to let him give you a quick overview on where we're at in the process and where we're headed.
Good evening. So just a real brief explanation as to where we are in the overall process. I find this is, this little speech is kind of helpful for municipal bodies like yourself, because sometimes there's that misconception that we could go to construction like right away, and this isn't that yet. So what we're doing today, right now, over the last year or so, is what's called scoping effort, and that is what is, it fits into the dark blue box on the left in the overall life cycle of a project, which is a project definition. So we're defining a project at a location, and if the report comes back and the study is successful, you know, V-Trans will take a good look at it and incorporate it into its project development program. And so that, the next steps after what we're discussing today would conclude the scoping report and study, and hopefully move it into the initial stages of design, preliminary design and engineering. And that process could take a couple of years, so just to be upfront and try to extinguish any sort of misconceptions on how quickly things happen. So like I said, we're pretty much at, we're wrapping up the scoping process of this. We would like to get the Select Board and Town's overall comments or, you know, review of what we've developed for you guys so far, and then we'll take that into consideration and fold it into the final scoping report, which would be ready approximately in about a month or two. And then we don't have funding to, to extend the scoping process beyond April 30th, so we really want to make sure we get our i's dotted and our t's crossed before then, so we can wrap it up and move it into project design. So that's kind of how we are overall in times of timeframe and whatnot, so.
And I'll jump back in and talk to the overview. So in regards to the scoping effort, the first thing that we needed to do is identify a scope, a purpose and need statement. We all know what the purpose of this is, but in general, it is to study this location, this intersection of Madison Road, Silk Road, Bennington College access along 67A to enhance safety, mobility, and access to all users. Historically, we know we have a high number of crashes in this location. We also know that there are difficulties with access, not only to the college for larger vehicles, but also challenges with the side streets entering into the flow of traffic on 67A. A little brief history here. So first assessed in 1985, revisited again in '89 and '92, local concerns meeting in 1994, and a final scoping report in February '96. That scoping report had a preferred alternative of a five-leg roundabout. It also had an analysis of signal warrants at that time, forecasted to 2020, and it said that a signal would be warranted if you were to do an intersection, a stop control intersection in the year 2020. I'll say, just to jump ahead, we have analyzed that, and due to the traffic growth models and forecasting to the year 2040, we did not find that a signal would be warranted if you were to go to that alternative, but I'll speak more to that. Again, now we're revisiting this. We had a local concerns meeting February 7th of last year, and now we're moving forward with the scoping report and some of these alternatives you'll see now. So as part of the conceptual alternatives process, we looked at a lot of things. We looked at a number of alternatives that stop control intersections, signalized intersections, as I mentioned before, as well as a number of roundabout configurations. We understood from the previous scoping report and feedback from most of the people we talked to, stakeholders, that the roundabout was something that really needed to take a hard look at. So you'll see in here, we looked at a three-leg approach, four-leg approach, five-leg approach, traditional stop control. Go to the next slide. These are our non-preferred alternatives. And as mentioned, the top left is a three-leg alternative, a three-leg approach alternative, which had a relocation of the Bennington College access drive onto Madison Road, also relocated Silk Road. And when we got feedback from the college, it was not desired to relocate the access drive. So that became one of our non-preferred. It's important to understand that the level of these alternatives for this scoping study are very not refined, so when you look at tie-ins and taper distances and things of that nature, you, they're all level playing apples to apples, but they're, not one of these is refined higher than the other. The second alternative that we looked at was a four-leg alternative, which again, considered a relocation of the college access drive. Again, that was not preferred. The lower left is a five-leg, more traditional, larger inscribed circle, larger circle diameter roundabout. And as you can see from this, the relocation of Silk Road, as well as multiple conflict points with the tight approaches of the college access drive and Madison Road, creates some challenges on that corner, as well as impacting the historic gate, so we came with a non-preferred on that alternative as well. The one on the lower right is a simple intersection, stop controlled or signalized. As I mentioned, the study that we did from a capacity analysis and signal warrant analysis basically told us that a signal was not warranted at this location, but again, not preferred alternative due to the relocation of the college access drive. So we did make it to a list of three shortlisted alternatives. We have a, I'll just give a quick overview and you can go through. We have a larger oval roundabout. We have a modified version of what was the preferred alternative in 1996, and then we have our take on the refinement of that 1996 of where we thought that the process was This is a very large footprint oval roundabout. The advantages to this roundabout are that it gains separation between each of the approach legs into this. This is a single lane roundabout. It allows for a less vehicle conflict point, specifically between the college access drive and Madison Road. It gets adequate or substantial, a fair amount of deflection on Route 67A as it enters into the roundabout, which creates a slower traveling speed and allows for better movements from the side roads into the flow of traffic from 67A. It does avoid the historic house and minimizes impact to the historic gate, although we know we need to take a closer look at how we will handle the final details of that gate. This is a roundabout that was developed very similar to what the preferred alternative was in the 1996 study. It had a bypass lane, slip lane from the college drive that allowed free rights onto 67A. It had a very smaller, a smaller inscribed circle. Just to give you comparison, the out-to-out edge of pavement on this roundabout is about 120 feet. The recently constructed one at Walmart, 7A and 67A, is about 130 feet, so it's a little bit of a larger circle. We made some adjustments to this from the 1996 version, if you were comparing the two, because that did not pass the larger design vehicles that we designed for today. So there's some small tweaks to this to get where this is. One of the concerns that we have with this alternative, although we wanted to continue it forward so that everybody could understand the context and consistency with the 1996 scoping study, is the east approach to the roundabout. You'll notice that there is not much deflection or bend as you come into the roundabout proper in circulatory, as the circulatory area of the circle, of the roundabout. What that's going to do is going to increase speed through that roundabout. And we were noted by some other folks that there's one, the one in Manchester, has a similar problem, and it causes faster speeds coming through the roundabout and will cause challenges to traffic trying to enter, this yielding to enter into that, that flow of traffic. So that's going to cause a problem with the Silk Road area turning in. Now, we did take a closer look at this and have done some working efforts on this to revise and review what we could do here, and we know that we can shift that circle a little bit to the north or a little bit to the, to the west and get that adequate deflection in there, but it's not going to be as much as what you'll see in the next alternative, which is our take to improve the 1996 preferred alternative. So this is a five-leg elliptical roundabout. To give you a comparative size to the one over by Walmart, this is about 130 feet across, similar to the Walmart one on the short access, but it's about 200 feet on the elongated access. What this ellipse does for us is that it brings Madison Road and the college drive in a little further apart, because we're slid up as compared to the previous one, and limits that vehicle conflict point in there. But the biggest thing that this does is this gives us a lot of deflection on Route 67A, therefore slowing down the circulatory traffic and allowing for vehicles to merge in off the yield lines on each of the, each of the approaches. This is also a one-lane roundabout, does have a substantial center area that could be, you know, from a landscaping beautification side of things. It offers some ample opportunities there, and it also improves some of the site distance aspects in terms of being able to view the roundabout in regards to where the historic house is on the corner. Again, some minimization of impact on the historic gate will be needed, but this was our take on trying to improve that deflection with something other than that small footprint roundabout that was from the preferred version in 1996. If you want to go to the next slide. So in order to compare all these alternatives, since you noticed that they're all very, very similar, it's not looking at a roundabout versus a signalized intersection versus a non-signalized intersection, the cost on these is relatively similar. So we did a number of things. We created an evaluation matrix that looked at a number of factors of criteria to kind of try and rank each of these, each of these alternatives, and we compared them to the no build. Now, we know that the no build is a little bit skewed, because although it flows traffic, it has a lot of safety concerns with it. So we looked at construction cost, we looked at level of service, which is the amount of delay, and this again is for your 2040 capacity analysis. As part of our capacity analysis, we also looked at what the queue length would be and how much it would back up. We've used this red, yellow, green format, where the red is a poor or a negative impact, and the green is a more positive impact, and we were able to rank all of these in that manner. So just to go through the criteria, we looked at construction cost, level of service, potential right-of-way impacts, that's a footprint side of things, site distance improvements, construction duration, which is level across all of them, and then safety and crash reduction factors, including approach overay deflection, circulating speed of the roundabout, traffic conflict points. And then we also looked at the environmental impacts, historical cultural resources, which are primarily the gate and the house, wetlands, we do not have any presence right in the area of the roundabout. We are within the floodplain on the approaches, and then we looked at the overall of the impervious area, where the pavement area on the ground. We also developed a benefit-cost ratio on this. Now, the benefit-cost ratio was a factor of capacity and safety compared to cost. Anything that's over a 1.0 factor basically justifies and says that the cost is worth the safety improvement at that location. We weighted each of the factors that we thought were more, of more value, including the safety and the benefit-cost ratio, to come up with an overall weighted rating. And just to walk through some of the meat of this table, you'll see that the construction cost is not a large difference. But when it comes to the level of service or the queue length- length, there is more delay on the 1996 scoping study, the most delay on the 1996 scoping study version, the minimal delay, medium delay on the five-leg oval, and the least delay or a level of service A on the five-leg elliptical. Right-of-way impacts, we do know that this roundabout, or this intersection is surrounded by a lot of college land. However, we have not considered that in evaluation of these alternatives. So again, we have it listed from the footprint on the ground in terms of right-of-way. Site distance improvements, again, consider the proximity of the roundabout and the geometry as it pertains to the Silk Road House. And again, we ranked those. As far as the safety crash reduction, this kind of speaks to what I was explaining on the, as I walked through to the alternatives. Alternative five, the 1996 study version, has the, you know, the mid-level, the worst deflection of the three. So again, we flagged that yellow. And it also has the greatest traffic conflict points. So as you look at this evaluation matrix, we used it as a tool to try and unbiased compare side-by-side all of these alternatives. And based on our review from this standpoint and what we've come up with, we're showing that the five-leg elliptical checks the most boxes in terms of benefit and has the higher ranking. Now, we do understand that, you know, there may be something we're missing, so we're really looking forward to your input from that side of things. Moving on from the evaluation matrix and our consideration of the intersection, we've just kind of framed out the next steps here. And as Mike had kind of said, our goal is to get the town on board from the preferred alternatives so that we can incorporate it into the scoping report, so that V-Trans can review, make a final decision, finalize our scoping report, and then move ahead with project programming. So we thank you for your time and hearing about these alternatives, and we look forward to getting your input. We realize that this improvement of this intersection is going to be a huge benefit to the town, so we're very interested in getting something everybody's happy with.
Thank you. The board, I'm sure, has questions for you. Mark, do you want to say anything before we do that? Are you, is there anything you'd like to add to this from the regional commission's perspective?
I'm summarizing the alternatives and the pros and cons. I did speak with, sorry, I did speak with somebody from Bennington College, Andy Schlatter, and they support this project, the roundabout project. And he said, based on a very casual reading of all the alternatives, their preferred alternative is also alternative six. So...
Okay. You've been working on this for a long time, that's why I called you up if you want.
Sure. It's been, BCRC's been working on it for decades, so it's great that, it's really, moving forward.
Great, thanks. Well, I'm sure the board has some questions for you, as do I. Would anybody like to start? Go ahead, Gene.
Can you speak to the pedestrian issues that will also be addressed and biking or cycling as well?
Absolutely. On any given alternative, it's going to be the same. We're going to maintain path connection for the Ninja Path. We are going to further consider, as we move into final design, if it is appropriate to separate the bike traffic from the roundabout itself and look at our shoulder width as we move through, should we decide to bring cyclists through the roundabout itself. At this level of scoping, we have not ironed out all of those final design details. Most of the work that we have talked about so far, it has been related to maintaining the Ninja Path connection and the path further to the west. But all of the considerations for that would be equal on all of the alternatives.
Okay. So how would you navigate a roundabout as a pedestrian? Like if you're coming from Hannaford and you want to get to Bennington College as a pedestrian?
As a walking pedestrian? It would be a function of, the way that we have it right now, and we've considered is to come, you would not want to cross the center of the roundabout itself. You would want to come across, we'll use the Ninja Path for an example, use the splitter island on the approach, which is the, you know, the approach between...
Excuse me, may I ask you to go back to, go back to the slide that has the oval on it, and maybe one of you could point out what he's talking about while the other one talks?
Elliptical, yeah. What did I say?
Number six.
Number six.
Backspace.
Number six.
This is a pivotal point, Gene, sort of how pedestrians navigate this, but I do think that they've spent some time working on this.
I'm sure they have an answer. I just don't know what it is.
Ninja Path.
Crosswalk.
This way.
No, you stay on the path. Looks like this is already in place.
And there's a way if you're on this side.
There must be a joke in here about...
No, on this side you would have to...
There we go. Good chat. Okay, great, thanks. So this visual, I think, may get at what you're talking about.
So what we've got planned right now in terms of the Ninja Path and pedestrians walking from this side is to utilize the splitter island, which is the, you know, gains the deflection as it enters into the roundabout itself, use that as a pedestrian refuge in between to then cross to the other side. That's the main pedestrian connection that we have focused on at this point in time.
Okay. So if you were at Home Depot, you would need to cross the street and get on the Ninja Path in front of, like, the Hampton Inn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Jamie, you have something, I think?
Yeah. Just to be clear, that, what do you call that island?
Splitter Island.
Right. That's a refuge?
Yes.
Yeah. That's kind of cryptic. So that effectively would be a crosswalk.
Correct.
Okay. Just one other question for you. On the matrix, you have a phrase, "impervious area." What does that mean?
Pavement area. So it's, when we're looking at it from a standpoint of environmental impact, we're looking at the amount of impervious or pavement area that we need to treat. We are right next to the river. We want to make sure from an environmental standpoint and from the operational stormwater standpoint side of things, the more footprint it is, the more it's going to take to treat it.
Genie or Chad?
So I think to follow up on Gene's question, so there'd be no, so there'd be no opportunity to widen the road a little bit to make it, I'm just, I'm concerned about bicycle traffic and also I, if there was a traffic surge there, it feels like the pedestrian refuge area would be less safe than it is right now. I mean, so I just, will we get a chance to play that as...
Oh, yes. There's going to be plenty of time to play with that and consideration of widening for bicycles and shared lane for bicycles, jump in if you want, Mike. But the bottom line is, is that the refuge that's out there today, the vehicles that are traveling are traveling at a much higher rate of speed.
Yes.
The circulatory, as they come in and they deflect and go around this roundabout, they're going to be down in the range of about probably 15 miles an hour. So it's going to give more of an opportunity for that refuge to be used, the way it was intended now. But you're going to be able to see, because right now, if you're out in that pedestrian refuge and somebody is coming from the, you know, from the east going to the west, you don't see that refuge because it's blocked by the house from a sightline standpoint until it's almost too late. This will give you an opportunity where the sightline is going to improve as well, but the circulatory speed is going to be reduced. And as part of our design moving ahead, we'd be able to quantify that and speak more to that.
So bicyclists would be able to use the Ninja Path to get to the highway. Is there an assumption that they would not go on the highway? Or is there enough room to build a bike lane on each side so that we wouldn't have two, you know, two-way traffic on one side of that road?
I think that's more of an aspect that we would want to look at as we move ahead with design. I've seen them done both and done both ways, where you allow the cyclist to navigate the roundabout itself, or you have provisions to, you know, off, not as much like the Ninja Path, which happens to be nice because it's there already, but, you know, has the ability to get off the road, have more of a dedicated bike lane and then come back on. But now we're, you know, you're looking at a couple of different crossings along with the Ninja Path. So those are details that we're going to have to vet a little bit further.
If I could just answer that question just a little bit. So basically, if you're heading, let's just use two example trips. If you're heading from, say, the Ninja Path going up to Bennington College, if I were a cyclist, I would take the Ninja Path and then cross 67A and then get on College Drive. And then if you're coming down College Drive, the situation is different because you're going downhill and you're going faster. So if you want to take, like, the safer, easier route, you could get back on the Ninja Path, cross the pedestrian splitter island, and then take the Ninja Path as you would now. Or you could just go around the roundabout. As a cyclist, you can ride through roundabouts. I think the idea of roundabouts are that they calm traffic so much, as he said, down to about 15 miles an hour. It makes it pretty easy. Usually, they don't strike bike lanes in roundabouts. It's expected that. Cyclists will use the roundabouts, so.
Thank you for the presentation. And as a math teacher, I have to thank you. The most dreaded question as a teacher is, when am I ever going to use this crap? And this is a great example. I'm already going to get into conic sections for an equation of an ellipse and circles. This is great material for my, so thank you. A great example for this, so I appreciate it.
I, we're a little bit in the realm of opinion here, and so I just would give you my unvarnished opinion, which is that if I look at the grid, it feels to me like the highest priority here to me is traffic calming, slowing people down, because this is just a place somebody's going to get killed someday. And so as I look at the grid, I'm more drawn to the 1996 study, but I don't like the slip lane. So what I'm wondering is, the slip lane from college onto 67A westbound, I'm wondering if it'd be possible to redo the 96 version without the slip lane to essentially use this elliptical format, but make it circular instead so that, so that it's a steady rate of speed around the whole circle. It's not faster and slower as you go around the circle. You have the full benefit of the traffic calming, but you wouldn't have the three crossings for the pedestrians over that complicated refuge area.
Can you flip back to that alternative, please?
So if you go back one alternative, yeah. So if we were to look at this alternative without the slip lane, it would feel to me like we'd have maximum traffic calming and we would not be compromising the pedestrian crossing.
We'll have to take a closer look. One of the things that we did with this analysis in addition to capacity and safety is we did run truck movements through this. We know that the college has a biomass facility up there and gets deliveries about twice a week and currently have to reverse direction and get up to there. And it's likely, just speaking off the top of my head, going to be challenging to have them come off of the college drive, circulate around the roundabout, and then back towards the west.
It should be big enough for that, though. If it's 120 feet, you should be able to take a tractor-trailer around that without having to go over it, right?
We could take a close look at those turn movements and vet that a little bit further.
If I could just point out one thing about this, one problem with this design, is there's very little deflection for vehicles as they're heading this way. So basically, they wouldn't have to slow down much. They can pretty much just go straight on 67A. So that's a big safety...
That raises the question that I was going to ask. He did mention that. But also, I'm looking at the grid and I'm also seeing that that has the maximum amount of roundabout circulation speed reduction, this scenario.
Yeah, but I would say for that particular movement, I don't see much speed reduction.
It's the circulating speed itself around it from, coming from the, you know, towards the west into the circle is going to slow down. But as I had mentioned briefly before, that deflection on that approach that we're talking about there is going to be problematic for the Silk Road traffic trying to enter. And that's going to be something that if we do want to advance this one further, that we need to take a closer look to shift the circle a little bit further, along with consideration of the slip lane, to try and introduce more deflection there. And we have, as I mentioned, we have taken a look at some of that, but I wanted to maintain context with the 1996 study so that we weren't presenting something... We've gotten a lot of feedback, this is all great, but why aren't you doing the 1996 study? And this is one of the concerns that we had with that. So...
Go ahead, Bruce.
I want to follow up on that because I was looking at the matrix and also looking at both the 96 and the ellipse. I was trying to figure out how you calculated the roundabout circulating speed, saying that the 96, that one right there that's on the screen, would have the lowest speed, whereas the ellipse would have sort of in-between moderate. It seems to me that if I made almost any vehicle on 67A traveling east, I almost don't have to slow down at all under that circumstance if I'm the first, if there's nobody in the circle coming from my left. So I was just trying to figure out, how did you calculate that? It would seem to me that the ellipse would be slower on circle speed rather than, because of its added deflection.
I would agree with you. I think that where we were leaning with this is that we were looking purely at the radius of it and we were assuming that when we looked at our other, because we had some other back of our pockets that we were working with this that, to try and increase the deflection on that. And I think we kind of got sidetracked on the fact that we were anticipating that we would be increasing the deflection on that leg as we fine-tune it, something we can take a close look at.
So you have models somewhere, I'm assuming, that work this...
We basically took a look at this because I knew that, we knew that this particular issue was going to come up because we know it's a problem on the Manchester roundabout. And we took a look to see what we could do, without me just coming here and saying that I can do the change. We took some look at it to see if we can adjust further to more improve the 96 version, and we can.
I appreciate that. And I guess for me, in addition to safety, the environmental impact of having a greater area that you have to, where you have to mitigate the water runoff, particularly that close to the river, strikes me as a tip in favor of the ellipse. That would be my assessment. But that's, again, as Donald says, that's an opinion that's based on nothing but looking at the pictures and having a gut feeling.
No, we appreciate that. We appreciate it.
I'd be interested to know, you know, how this board feels about traffic calming a little bit. But it feels to me like, you know, maybe one thing we say is, we don't know about elliptical, we don't know about circular, but a priority for us is that the traffic slows down there to the point that people can safely cross the road on foot. Does that feel right to everybody?
That would certainly be true.
So, and that there'd be a minimal number of refuge, pedestrian refuges, so that it would not be a complicated process of hopping from one refuge to another as it looks in this 96 scenario where you have to kind of take three different crossings to get across a relatively simple section of road. I might need a little reassurance that elliptical, I think people are still getting used to the idea of a roundabout. And as you go around the roundabout, there's kind of a centrifugal force thing that keeps you at the right speed. But I'm not sure I've ever been around an elliptical roundabout. And I'm not sure what it feels like, whether if it's, it feels like you'd get startled by the sharpness of the curve. You'd be in the sort of a complacent, oh, this is easy. And then all of a sudden, you'd have to do a very sharp turn to make it around the sharp part of the curve. But I am totally up for being educated on that.
Williams sounds very similar.
Exactly.
The one around the Williams Inn, Deformed Williams Inn?
And how, what's the comparison in terms of, is that, that's much larger than...
It's much, much larger.
Yeah, it's huge. I mean, there's a park in the middle of that one. Yeah, I'm not even sure that's comparable to this. But I'm more thinking of something that you go around in a matter of seconds. Does it matter that it's elliptical? Is it confusing to the driver? And if we build this, are we going to regret it because so many people skid off during an icy event in the sharp part of the curve?
The radius is no worse, it's not even, it's not any worse than the roundabout itself.
No, than the small roundabout. Right. But you have a straight section.
Well, it's bent.
Is that really straight?
It's less, it's less straight than the first alternative that I presented, because that was one of the concerns with our first alternative, that oval one, is that it would give the opportunity to speed up on the straightaways.
Right. Well, I guess I'd be agnostic on the ellipse versus the circle, but I think traffic calming, easy pedestrian crossing, those would be priorities for me, anyway.
No, I would add...
Donald, I would add, and one of the key problems with that intersection is the sight distance problems you have at Silk Road where we intersect with Route 7, 67. And having that resolved in one way or another is going to be key.
I think this one is the best for that.
Donald, I have a feeling that you've probably been around many roundabouts that are that shape. You just didn't really realize it. I think you probably wouldn't even realize it unless you've looked at it the way we're looking at it now. I mean, if you've been to New Jersey, you've probably been around many, many.
Yeah, when you're Massachusetts, New Jersey, there's a lot that are more.
Yeah. And I think you wouldn't even notice it.
And they're huge.
Well, I'm, this is a relatively small one, though, as opposed to the, there would be changes of speed necessary in order to navigate that relatively tight diameter turn. But anyway, I'm not an expert in this. I'm, you know, I've noted my concern, but I'm only one person here, so.
We appreciate it.
Other thoughts? Anybody in the audience like to comment on this? Anybody have any thoughts, or?
Can I just ask a general question? Does it normally take 35 years to accomplish this? Is this like exceptionally long, or?
I'll let you take that one. Leave me with the tough ones, huh? 35 years is a long time. The, I guess what I would say to that is that the first, the first project, if you will, was never a project. It was a scoping effort, similar to what we were doing here. And for reasons beyond any of our knowledges, it got squashed. And so, you know, I can't, I can't speak to that in the past, but I can tell you, there's a, this renewed effort to do something at this location has sprung towards the top of our priority list. So I think you're going to see, actually, I know you'll see more motivation on our part to get this programmed and to get us into design on this. The issues that we're seeing here are, just over the last 10 years, are way worse than they were, you know, to the years prior to the first scoping effort, so.
I guess I'm just saying that the select board, whoever that may be, and the town manager, whoever that may be, in the future, would appreciate any tips you can give us to move these projects along at a faster pace than this one.
Well, in this particular case, if the project goes to programming and gets into preliminary and final design, a lot of the project schedule is actually going to be hinged upon the right-of-way acquisition process. And fortunately here, most of the parcels on this, at this location, are owned by the college. And because the college is supportive of us in this project, they have said they would be willing to, they would consider donating the land to us, the state, to build the project. If they do that, if they follow through with their promise, that could save two years off the design process. So we're crossing our fingers and, you know, we're hopeful that they make good on that progress, that process, promise. And, but there hasn't been any sort of vindications they wouldn't. So, I mean, they're anxious to see this happen, or something happen here. They gain, they seek to gain, you know, a lot for having us do something here, not just because of the safety issues, but also because it serves as a gateway, not only to the town, but also to the college. So there's that cultural aspect to the project that has benefits as well. So everybody's playing really nice right now, so we're really optimistic that we'll have, you know, we'll have something sooner than later compared to the last effort.
Great. It is getting to the point where most of us in town, now after you've been here for a while, know somebody that's been in an accident in that intersection, and it's, the numbers are creeping up to the point that it's very obvious to us that we have to do something. Dan, go ahead.
So it looks like we're wrapping up here, so I would put in a serious plug for you folks to choose an alternative. I'd like their preferred alternative, so we could keep this process moving. These are conceptual plans. All of those concerns regarding deflection and pedestrian and bike, that's all going to be dealt with as we go through the preliminary design phase and then the final design phase. And these folks, V-Trans, will be working with BCRC in the town to review those plans, and we'll certainly bring them back to the select board. So all those concerns that you have regarding details will be dealt with in the future, but I would urge you to keep the process moving, so that's just my plug.
Okay. After, that's a good follow-up on Gene's question of what can we do to make things go a little bit faster? So, you know, why don't we take that fairly seriously and see if we can move this along tonight?
This does require a meeting rule?
This does not require a meeting rule. This is just a sense of the board of where we feel like we're heading.
I do think we have public.
Oh, sure.
I have a quick question, too. Again, regardless of what alternative we pick, I see a construction time of like 18 months. And I guess my concern and question is, there's going to be some sort of a traffic diversion during this prime process? Are we talking about closing down 67A for a year and a half?
We're anticipating this to be a phased construction, where they keep the road open at all times, in the same configuration, build one side, build the other. Will be traffic shifts that go on during that. Some inconvenience from that standpoint, obviously, as any construction project is, but a number of these that we have been involved with have been able to be built with phased construction without a closure and detour.
All right. So notwithstanding my elliptical fears, would this board like to put forward that this alternative looks to be the best to us with the kind of footnote, I guess, that pedestrian safety really is going to be something that we look carefully at, and traffic calming really is something that we're going to look at. And I guess number three, you know, the college is a great partner to this town, and I would say we really care that this works well, very well for them. We see them as an important partner on many things, not, not the least of which is our economy, so. Is it fair to say that, since we don't have to vote on this, but is there anybody that would feel?
Number six.
Number six?
Number six. And can I just say, I don't know if anybody else is a fan, but I'm a fan of the lowest impervious area possible. Quite frankly, that's an important consideration when we're talking about wastewater and we've got a river that close. It's not, I mean, it's not up there with people's safety, but it's really close, in my view.
And that's why this number six makes most sense.
Okay. So are you satisfied that you have a sense of the board on this? Would you like a vote?
I would appreciate a vote, actually.
I would move number six.
Okay. Bruce moves number six, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And there are no opposed. Okay. Thank you for a good presentation. And so, in the inimical words of Gene Connor, "Let's see if we can make this happen a little faster." No, we're really grateful that you're on the job, and we appreciate you taking the time to come down here, know it's a long trip, talk us through things, and let us know how we can be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, that is kind of fun stuff, isn't it? So, the next item on our agenda is preliminary report on lead line replacement grant, and we have Mr. MSK himself. Jason Dolmetsch, what have you got for us tonight? We've read your report.
I'm Jason Dolmetsch with MSK Engineering. I did prepare a very small, brief slide, but I think it's going, this presentation's going to take a brief amount of time.
Okay.
And I wonder, really the only thing that's worth showing is where we found confirmed lead lines, lead service lines. So if you'd like me to put that up on the map, I can get it up for you, but otherwise, I can just give you a brief verbal report, whatever the will of the board is.
I think the map would be helpful.
The map? Okay. All right. If you can give me like two seconds, I'll get also.
Donald, while he's doing that, after this presentation, I laid on the table something for you at the beginning of the meeting. In order to move forward with the bond question at the annual meeting, a resolution, as indicated here, should be adopted by the board following this presentation. You have to find a necessity, a public necessity, that demands that the improvements be made, and that the cost, nine and a half million, is too great to be paid from annual operating revenues.
Okay. As long as we're letting Jason fuss with technology here, we're jumping a little bit ahead to the, to the warning of the ballot. But this is a funny bond, in that it would be 100% paid back by the state.
That's correct.
We would receive every dollar back from the state.
We would not do any construction that would not be fully reimbursed.
So it's, but we have to call it a bond, because?
It has to be a bond. We have to show the state that we are willing to essentially borrow the funds. The funds are being made available by the federal EPA through the state of Vermont to communities that wish to remove private lead service lines. So this is work that is being done outside the right-of-way for individual property owners who have been determined to have lead service.
Okay. So that's the way I think this board has understood it, and I think probably most of us are happy that the ballot language does talk about the fact that the entire cost will be reimbursed from the state. Are we on firm ground with that as a ballot? Have we had Rob look over that ballot?
Yes, we are on firm ground with the ballot language.
Okay. Okay.
We're back.
We kill enough time for you?
Yeah, that was great. And I employed a trusty sidekick here, so this is our winning day here. So this is a brief report for the, on the planning loan, the planning grant loan for the lead replacement project. Our purpose, our original purpose of the loan was to verify, visually verify, lead service lines and cite them for replacement. And so, the, just to give a brief overview of the lead service line extent inside the town of Bennington, we have approximately 13, 4,800 connections within the water system, so those are individual connections to individual structures. Approximately 43% or 1,700 or 1,664 of those service lines were either installed originally as lead service line or are not known. So they were either, meaning that they were constructed or installed prior to 1986, which is when the lead service line ban came into effect, or we have no information for them, so. So with the, this effort was undertaken to build on the original mapping project that was started in 2017, which identified sort of the extent or the potential scope of the issue. And our goal was to visually verify lead service lines that could be replaced. So what we did was, we sent out a mailing to all 1,664 units that were on our list from the prior study. And that was a one-page letter, basically describing that we were seeking 100% reimbursable funding, and that the goal was to do a replacement of that lead service line to that unit owner for free. And we provided to them a return postcard, which basically made it super easy. They could provide their name, their address, their email and phone number, the best way that they preferred to be contacted, and two boxes. One which was, I would like you to inspect my home, and I would love to be, have my lead service line, if it's verified, replaced, or I believe that I do not have a lead service line and the property is not served by one. So we, I would also point out that our original effort was not to go for the lofty goal of 100% participation with 1,600 units. Our goal was to reach approximately half of them in some capacity. And what we ended up getting was, we had about, oop, did we go back? Oh, no, right. I don't have this information. So we had 865 units responded to the mailing. And we were able to investigate 726 of them, so 726 units were visually assessed. And the remainder of those units either did not respond to repeated attempts for their contact information, or were, they responded that they did not have a lead service line. And that was done with 1,200 individual phone calls made across several months. So all in all, we had a relatively successful response rate, given the degree of effort it takes to really reach out to landowners. So this mailing was, I think, was well-produced by the staff in my office, and it was relatively successful, so. What we ended up with, and this is the map, we had 136 visually confirmed lead service lines. The spread essentially throughout the downtown region, there's really no area of the original settlement prior that was constructed, you know, between 1883 and 1924, that really doesn't have at least one lead service line on the street. I would like to just point out that it's important to note that while we visually verified 132 service lines, that doesn't immediately remove the remaining 594 that we didn't. It basically says that we did not find a lead service line by visual inspection. One of the original criteria that the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund program identified for the reimbursable funds was that if you dig up a service line that you believed to be lead, that you would not be reimbursed for that effort. So our goal was really to identify things that we knew for certain. It appears that with initial discussions with the technical staff at Drinking Water and the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Funds, that it's possible that we might be able to remove that, and therefore be able to get a little bit closer to absolute verification. So, but that's still ongoing discussion with them. So right now, we're really just, at this point, working on an approach with the state funders and the state technical staff on an appropriate method for being able to reach 100% removal on the projects that we undertake. And with that, I'm, tonight, I'm basically, our, so our next steps, really, we're sort of wrapping up the planning process at this point, with the aim for the voters to hopefully authorize 100% reimbursable funds. And then we would go into final design and then construction for the projects, for the amount of money that we could get reimbursed. And an initial, I'm, I'm having, we're having initial discussions. Originally, we were talking about a $1.1 million project, but it's possible that we're going to be able to wrangle in a significantly larger amount of money that might get us closer to 100% removal. But more to come, so.
So Jason, I think one of the things that we're very grateful for you, grateful to you, is that you brought this opportunity to us so that we could be one of the first through the door for this money. And the best money is always the first money when it comes from the state, so it would be great to move this through as quickly as we can and to try to do as much as we can in the first pass. I think probably all of us have a certain amount of fear about what happens to that other 50, 48% that didn't respond. And did we truly do everything we could do to knock on those doors, particularly if it's a, if it's a free lead line replacement? And if not, is there a chance that we'll get a second bite at the apple, once people realize it's not such a bad?
So, my preliminary engineering report has a limited scope, and one of the responses, initial responses I got back from the state was, you did not ask for enough. So, which is a great, which is a great criticism.
Maybe I'll hear that out.
So I, I think it's important to sort of frame what the initial planning effort was for this, which was really to, to really go after things that we were absolutely certain for, because we have that original constraint. The state and the SRF look like they are aiming to do something with, which aims for greater certainty of a more widespread removal. So while this planning effort aimed for a 50%, approximately 50% contact rate, the aim for the overall project that we're going to be aiming for is to try to get to 100% removal. And so, to answer your question in brief, no, we have not done everything that could be done to get, to reach, to fully contact those remaining 800 units. And I would also go further to say that we would like to get to greater certainty on those 500 so units that we've already contacted, that we don't feel 100% certain, don't have at least a portion of a lead service line somewhere in the street. But that's, it's a complicated effort. I think our goal is to really work through an appropriate process to make sure that we feel certain we've removed all those lead service lines in the area of any project that we do.
Okay. So we've got some questions here. I'll start with Jim, then go to Jim.
Yeah, Jason, over, what kind of timeframe are you talking about to replace all these lead lines? I mean, they work, this, this map of the town, I mean, it's everywhere.
Yes, it's everywhere. I mean, not everywhere. Yes, it's everywhere. I mean, not everywhere. It's not in the old, the newer portions.
Right, but it's spread out pretty generally.
Mm-hmm. I don't have a great answer for you. I think that we'd be looking at a multi-year project if we did a full replacement. So, and I also think the planning effort would be, the planning effort would take us through this year. If we can roll, if we can move the funds and line the funds up in the way that I'm expecting us to, we'd be looking at doing a design, doing the design work for this year and then rolling into a construction project since for spring of 2021.
Okay. Have you done any sort of, you know, ballparking of what it would cost for each individual?
All in, we're looking at approximately 11,000 to 13,000 per unit. And this is just basically ballpark, like all in, everything, right?
For each and every one of these little red dots?
Correct. So you're looking, and there again, you know, this is our range, right? Because we still, we're still dealing with a lot of uncertainty, is I'm thinking that we're somewhere between eight and 14 million, depending on how many units we find.
And did, did you compute for an increase in CPI over time?
Well, no, that was, that's present-day dollars. What, there again, I think we'd be looking at, we're looking at, you know, the next one to two years, or essentially trying to do this over a three-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, Jean?
Yeah, it's not really a question. I guess it's just a clarification. I don't want the public to think that their water is unsafe, even if they have a lead line, because you can speak to this better than I. The water is treated so the lead does not leach into the water. Not that it's not a good idea to get rid of the lead line, it is, but you can speak more eloquently than me, so you can take it.
Well, we, we do treat the water to, to reduce the corrosion of both lead and copper into private systems and into the municipal system as well. It doesn't prevent all lead from, from leaching, but it, it brings the levels down in, in our water system to safe levels.
So if I can just, I'll go add to that. Town of Bennington was the first town in the country to install corrosion control on their system back in the 70s. So Bennington's always been at the forefront of this, this effort to reduce lead exposure in water. And in addition to that, Bennington since then has been in compliance with their action level limits with the, with respect to the lead and copper rule.
Still, what's the name of the chemical that's added to the lines of...
Oh, I'm not sure. What are we using now?
It's lime and CO2.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, the tagline of the report is, lead is a toxic substance, particularly to children and pregnant mothers. The Vermont Department of Health and the EPA both have strong recommendations for eliminating exposure to lead in drinking water. The town of Bennington is in compliance with the EPA lead and copper rule, but the only means to completely ameliorate the impact of lead-water distribution lines is to remove the lines entirely. So let's get them out of there. And let's, let's keep, you keep bringing the money, but just make sure to tell us before anything starts backfiring on us, you know, sort of any expenses or anything start backing up to the town, we want to know well before that time. So.
We are actively working with the state on lining money up, so we will continue down that path right now. They've been, they've been great partners in this effort.
So any comments from the public? I would say unless there's any more conversation to be had at the board level, that we would, I'd be looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'd love to make, I'd love to make a motion, because I do think this is really critical. So because this is a public necessity to protect the, the public, and the cost at $9.5 million is too great to be paid from ordinary annual revenues, I would make a motion that we, we bond for this work over the next couple of years.
Second.
Okay. And unspoken in that motion is the, is the complete compensation from the state?
Yes.
Other discussion? No? I'm going to call a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Jason, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work and, yep, that's, that's really, really happy to keep working on that problem. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the second installment of the warrants conversation, of the ballot conversation about the local tax option. We, again, this is, we're breaking it up into pieces here. So tonight what we're doing is the second part of a conversation about whether or not this is something we should be putting to the voters or not. As everybody knows, this was something that the charter made possible when the charter change went in. And now the question is, given that, that the potential revenues from this are fairly substantial and it could have a fairly positive impact on property taxes, is this something that we should put to the voters? Obviously, there'd have to be a lot more community conversation about this before that happened. We could plan that if we wanted to. But again, the conversation tonight is, and I'd be interested to know what, what the board has heard from talking to people during the course of the week, should this be on the ballot at this point? So I think I made my feelings kind of clear at the last meeting, and I don't think I've changed my position very much, which is that it does feel like this is something the voters should decide on. We, you know, we do, we work really hard to keep the municipal budget down, and still, we get hit with something like an 11% increase in health insurance. And when we get hit with those kind of increases, there's no place to turn short of reducing services. And so we don't want to plow less roads, we don't want to do less recreational opportunities. In fact, we, we hear from many, many people who ask us to do more of those things, not less of those things. And so, so the reason I think that this board would like it considered is because there's an opportunity for a, a second way of bringing in revenue besides just property tax payments, which is the, which is where that money's coming from right now. There are a lot of details, and there are a lot of things that we could discuss at future meetings, but because it has a direct impact potentially on, on the people who pay property taxes, I think the question is, should we, and yet there's another case that can be made, is it, it could be difficult for local, as we heard last week, it could be difficult for local businesses, it could be difficult for hoteliers and restaurants and whatnot, adds a little burden to, adds a burden to them. So as we balance these things out, is this something the board should be balancing out, or is this something that we really feel like that, that voters need to sort out? So let's, let's hear what the board has to say on this. Where, where's everyone tonight? Now, we'll do, we'll ask the public their opinion, too.
Guess I'll start.
Sorry.
I didn't mean to look into the chat.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with you, Donald. This is a decision for the voters. The voters should be the ones making the decision, and it should go on the ballot for them to say yes or no. The only part of my opinion I'll give, and I've heard feedback, is each option should have its own separate vote. I think some people feel different about alcohol and tax, or excuse me, alcohol and beverage taxes, and cigarettes versus rooms and meals. So I think it's separate questions is the most feedback I heard, but 100% the voters should have a say on this.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jean?
I agree. This really should be up to the voters. I think it really can have a positive impact on property taxes. I, I was alarmed to see that our salt bill this month is higher than our marketing budget for the year. 60,000 for salt just for this past month. And I, I think we've got to find an alternative way to, or an additional way to do the things that we need to do as a town, and this offers us that opportunity. I agree with you, Chad. It should be, we should list it as each different option and let voters decide what they want to, what they want to put a 1% tax on, if anything. And I am in favor of having a tax.
Jim?
I made it clear that I support this, and I'll reiterate the reasons why I believe that it should be left up to the voters. But going further than that, you know, Bennington has laid out the welcome mat for decades to our neighbors who enjoy the use of our infrastructure, our streets being plowed, police and ambulance when they need it, even our fire trucks when we respond to fires in Powell, Woodford, Shaftesbury, and the surrounding towns. And it's been very generous on the part of property taxpayers to, to do that. And here's a chance for us to ask our neighbors if they'll just give us a helping hand so we can continue to be the hub where they like to do their shopping, do their business. And I think we would all benefit from it. So.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Bruce, thoughts?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. One, I, if we, when, if we put this, it sounds like we're going to vote to put this on the ballot. I would absolutely insist that we have, we use the option where the, rather than having one yes or no for the article on the option tax that we have, however we construct it, it gets constructed that there are four different votes. And the reason for that is, I for one am not, I will not, I cannot see myself voting for the 1% sales tax. I agree with a lot of your arguments. I just find it regressive taxes to be unacceptable. It's, for me, it's an ethical unacceptability. And I'm, I'm just going to say it's a regressive tax. It is designed to hurt the people who can afford it the least. It'll hurt them the most. Even with the exemptions, it will still be that case. There is a reason why at food pantries, toilet paper, and other kinds of essentials like that are desperately needed, because people can't afford to pay for them, and they're not involved in any of the, they're taxed. But, so, all that being the case, I suspect we will, I don't see any good reason not to trust the voters. The other thing, however, that I saw on a previous draft, which I was, is not on the current one in the packet, which is, and we've spoken about it in the past, and that is, I would be interested in hearing my colleagues talking and the community talking about designating a percentage of whatever comes in for either property tax relief, or marketing, or something like that. I know we've spoken informally, and I also know that there are arguments that, well, that's not going to leave us with the kind of flexibility we need. I am overwhelmingly reluctant to just take in a million dollars in taxes and say to everybody, just trust us. We'll spend it the right way. And I, it's not against anybody here. I think we're all trustworthy folks. I really do. But I would like us to at least consider adding a percentage of this money, if it passes, to go for identifiable expenditures, whether it's marketing, whether it's repayment of bonds on, on firing equipment, or whether it's straight, I mean, I'm a little wondering what property tax reduction might mean in the budget sense, but something very specific. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. And we'll have a chance to talk about the specifics of that. If we move forward, we'll have a chance to talk about the specifics of that.
Well, I would find it very difficult to vote on a motion if we don't have the specifics in the motion.
You, well, to vote on the motion, whether or not to put it to the...
Yeah, because the ballot will have to say. I mean, what does, what does the ballot look like? That's what we would be voting on. So one, I would like us to pick, I mean, we got two versions. I would like us to pick one. I think three of us have identified the one where we separate out all four options. And then I still think the ballot should include some designated use. That's, that's my personal belief.
And there are other people that feel very strongly that we shouldn't be doing that.
I am, I, look, that's the way democracy works. I don't have a problem with that.
Right. Okay. So Jean?
I definitely think we should put it on the ballot, and I will concur that the four separate questions is the best idea. And I guess for me, I am really looking forward to hearing from other municipalities that have done this. And I hope the community will, will wait to form your opinion until after we've become more educated. I, I think they're going to, more and more communities are doing this. So it seems to me that if it wasn't working and it was having a detrimental effect on any segment of the community, that people, municipalities would not be moving forward with this. But it seems to be gaining traction. So, so for me, I, I'm really looking forward to hearing and getting down in the weeds where Bruce is sort of going. And but as far as just generically, yes, I do believe it should go on the ballot in March.
Okay. I think we should make time to ask people what they think. We've got a little bit of time here, so if there are individuals that would like to come up, please raise your hand. And why don't you come up, Jonah, and then we'll get, Colleen, yeah, come to this mic first, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jonas Spivak. If you don't know me, my wife and I own a business here in town, The Hawkins House. So full disclosure, I would benefit from tax relief as the, as such as being discussed here. But I think while this is obviously a question that ultimately needs to be decided by voters, and I do think it is wise to separate those four categories, to get people's feelings on the individual categories, I agree with Bruce, that is absolutely vital, that how we use the money is a crucial component on how that should be worded for, for the vote. I say that in part because I have a very basic question that I want to ask you, and hopefully you have the answer. Are you aware currently of what percentage of our, our taxes in those four categories are currently being paid for by residents versus non-residents? Do we know that?
Stuart, how would we find that out?
You know, there's, there's really no way to know from what the Vermont Tax Department provides us as to who is paying the variety of taxes.
Okay. I, I couldn't imagine how you would figure that out, so I'm not surprised to hear that answer. And part of the reason I mention that is because I think in a town of what the so-called gold towns or tourist towns in Vermont, where it's clear that a vast majority of the taxes are being paid by people from outside of your town and even outside of your state, I think a local option ta, tax has a really powerful appeal to it, because you know that is the case. But as Bruce pointed out, in a community like ours that we know is not primarily tourist-based, really, we're not talking about additional tax revenue, we're really talking about just shifting a tax from one source to another. And ultimately, some of that certainly would be regressive, to use your phraseology. And I guess my concern is that if you just dangle the idea of tax relief in front of taxpayers, it would be logical for taxpayers to just say yes to that. The problem that I see is that those types of benefits would ultimately be fleeting. Of course, we would see a reduction in taxes for a number of years, and ultimately, we would hit that point of equilibrium where we started, and those taxes would start to increase again. I think we all recognize that's inevitable. So while I'm not against the idea of a tax, I'm excited about the possibility of what we can do with a tax. Why not, instead of thinking about in terms of just tax relief, where ultimately, as I said, over time, we would be right back where we started, why not instead consider using this as an opportunity to transform Bennington, to move the needle, to do something extraordinary? So for example, if we had a number like 1.3 million to work with, what if we spent the first million every year on transforming Bennington? Some great idea. Or perhaps a percentage on marketing and percentage on, on not, not subsidizing existing budget items for recreation, but new recreational opportunities, which have a double benefit of both improving quality of life for residents right here and right now, but also making us more attractive as a community for businesses to relocate and for new residents to come here. Ultimately, the way to fix our tax problem is not a short-term Band-Aid, but ultimately growing our tax base and having more residents move here. We could do that if we had the money to do something transformational. I've heard over and over how limited we are in our ability to do that. But I'll tell you right now, if our community spent a million dollars a year reimagining our community, that's news in and of itself. So I would encourage us to include in that question for our taxpayers, not just this idea of some short-term tax relief, but about how can we use this as an opportunity to transform... transform our community? Now, let's say we use that, I mentioned a million dollars because that's an attractive number, and it sounds powerful. That would leave $300,000 the first year for immediate tax relief. And what if we committed that every year after that, as the option revenues grew, perhaps as a result of these successful transformative measures, that all those additional new funds would then go to tax relief? That means we would have some immediate tax relief, we would be moving the needle for the future, and every year, we could see that amount of tax relief growing. I also understand your concern, and the concern I've heard from others, that, well, just adding more money to government is always risky. I think there are ways we can mitigate that. Perhaps it's a taxpayer committee, perhaps working in conjunction with our community development director, that sort of coordinates how the money is spent, and ultimately annually, the voters get to decide on how those funds are spent. So, in summary, I would just encourage us not to think short-term, how we can help ourselves for the next few years, but to think long-term, how we could really transform what we're doing here in Bennington, and ultimately reduce all our taxes for the, moving forward. Thank you for your time. I do appreciate this discussion.
Thank you, Jonah. Colleen?
Hello, my name is Colleen Harrington, and I'm running for select board in Bennington County. This has been my family's home for 14 generations. My father, Mo Harrington, sat on several boards, all serving this community proudly. I'm opposed to the 1% local option tax for the simple reason, I don't believe this is the right time to try to impose yet another tax on citizens of Bennington County. Town management has raised our taxes for 30 years, and we have nothing to show for other than a town that went from thriving and prosperous to struggling to survive. Do we really want to trust local government to be fiscally responsible with another million-plus dollars? I believe the local option tax would be detrimental to local businesses as consumers are already inclined to travel to other localities or shop online if they can save money from a lower tax rate. The proposal would increase the cost of doing business for companies as those entities would have to pay a higher local tax on their own purchases, and those businesses would incur administrative costs to collect the short-term tax from customers. Finally, the single most decisive reason for my opposition to the 1% local option tax is because it adds an unfair burden to an already regressive system of taxation in Vermont. The working poor in Vermont pay a larger portion of their income as sales taxes. Wealthy people like this idea because every dollar they earn, they're not going to spend. Every dollar that someone who's in the bottom 20% of income earners, they're going to spend every dollar they have, and so every dollar will be taxed. This is not the appropriate time to levy yet another tax on Bennington County residents. So, Vermont did a recent poll that indicated the town doesn't want this tax either, which is only slightly short of a poll which the town put out. We cannot maintain this unsustainable tax burden any longer. Our businesses are closing. Native Vermonters like my family are leaving in droves. The working poor and middle class cannot sustain the outrageous cost of living any longer in Vermont. We need to say no to any more taxes, or there will be no one left to pay taxes. I look forward to discussing the issues with Bennington voters over the next few weeks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I, I may not have been entirely clear in my instructions about what I think we're talking about tonight here, but, but I would encourage other people as we get on with this conversation to remember that tonight, we're just deciding whether or not it should go on the ballot. And then if, if we decide it should go on the ballot, we will have public hearings in it, which hopefully we can have public debate, and we can have everybody give their different sides on it and get it all out. Now, I understand that some of it bleeds over into-
And it has, true.
And it has, I understand that some of it bleeds over. But I'd like to try to keep, in the remaining 15 minutes or something that we're going to work on this, I'd like to try to stay laser-focused on, is there a reason why we should not be letting the voters decide this tonight? So, that, I think that's the question I'd like to ask. Lynn, come on up, please.
So, I'm Lynn Green, and I'm a business owner in town, and also a resident of Bennington. I had this big, long thing planned, but then I just listened to Donald, and so I really only want to say one thing. I really would encourage you to dig deeply about itemizing these as the four different taxes, because when Jonah has this wonderful thought of this million-dollar pot, this 1.3 million-dollar pot, for example, if we only did alcohol, that's only $41,000. We might as well just go home. Rooms, you know, 75,000; meals, 316,000; retail sales, 1.4 million. And I, in full disclosure, am a hospitality owner. I am 1,000% in favor of the meals and rooms tax, even though that affects me, you know, theoretically negatively, but I believe that this will be, I believe for so many reasons that I'll get into in the next meeting when we're allowed to state our opinions on all that, why I think all four of these are highly beneficial to Bennington. But I would really encourage you to think about that, that if you're, if everyone says, oh, yes, let's tax the alcohol, there's just no point in it. I mean, there's just not enough money there. We have to look at this as a total nut. So, I'll save all of my other comments, except for one thing that Ms. Harrington, right? One thing that I wanted to state there, though, is that online retail sales are subject to Vermont tax, which would also be subject to the local options tax. So, just a point of clarification there, that would not be a way to work around this, this tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, and I appreciate you, I appreciate your thoughts on that. It is, I've wondered about that, too, whether or not if we did do this, it would be better to bunch them or do them separately, and, and I can see a case for both. But let's, let's keep hearing from the public. Come on up. Good evening.
Hi, yes, Sarah Perrin. I'm also a local business owner in town. I'm just going to keep it short and sweet. I'm in favor of seeing this go to the voters. Very concise, itemized, very simple, so it's, everybody can understand exactly what it is, very transparent. Just, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, I'm-
Eric? Matt?
Matt. Sorry. Hit it dead air bucket there.
I'll be quick. I agree with just about everything that Jonah said and also Bruce. You know, my biggest thing is, I know that this right here is for to see if it's going to go on the ballot, but in reality, if it's going to go on the ballot, it's going to probably pass. I mean, it really is. So, it's more, it's bigger than just saying, oh, what's going to go on the ballot? I really do. I mean, something, some, some piece of it will pass, because just what he said, 2,000 people that vote in this town are going to say, oh, jeez, taxes are going down, and they're going to check the box. I just, that's what I feel. Just from, just one quick thing, I've owned businesses in two towns that have this tax, North Adams and Williamstown. You know, North Adams is not in great shape, and, and, you know, the mass moka money that comes in there is great and all, but they don't go into the town and spend that, so it really just hurts the locals. And in Williamstown, yeah, of course, it's going to work in Williamstown, right? Just why it works in Manchester, the way it works. But for my business, it's all locals. If I don't have my locals, I don't have a business, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll get you next, Nancy. I'll get you next. Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
Hi, Ryan Hassett. My wife and I own a few different businesses here in town. I had a lot to say. I agree with Jonah on a lot of them, but changing a little bit from what you said is, when you put this out to voters, and I agree, voters should make this decision, but it depends on how you word it to the voters. If you word it on the ballot to say, hey, if you vote for this, it lowers your, your real estate tax, obviously, people are going to vote for it. If you spoke into many of the other towns, like you had mentioned, that when it went through, like Manchester, Manchester went through, I think, 1998 or 1999, and it was for Act 60, that was what the money was for. That's not what the money's for today, and it's changed. It's morphed over the years. So, it depends on how you word this to the voters, if they're going to vote for it or not. So, tonight, I believe it's not just, shall we say, is it going to go to the voters? But how is it going to go to the voters? Are we going to get another opportunity to speak about how it's going to be worded to go to the voters? Or is it just going to be, hey, vote for this? They vote for it, and then we talk about, okay, well, now we're in the weeds, how are we going to work this? Because there's a lot of opportunity that we can use for this money, or there's a lot of opportunity that that money is just going to get put right back into the general fund and get lost with everything else.
Thank you. It's a good point. And to your point, while you're sitting down, I'd just say, we, there, we have taken out, we think, any editorializing language in the proposed ballot. So, at this point, it is absolutely stripped down so that it's a, it's a decision people would be making based on whatever they've learned when they go into the ballot, whatever they, whatever they've taken on. And it's not, it doesn't promise to spend the money in a certain way, it doesn't promise to do something to your taxes. It's just, all it is, is another source of revenue, so that instead of the town having to raise 11 million from property taxpayers, it has to raise a smaller number from property taxpayers. And that's, that's the way that draft is written right now.
Well, in the last two meetings, you yourself have been a big opponent to real estate tax relief. That, that is what you have pretty much stood up on a soapbox and saying, we should do this because it lowers taxes. And that's not necessarily how it should be put out to the voters, is this is going to be a 1% tax, and we're not telling them what the tax is going to be for. You, along with a few others, but specifically you, has been saying this on television to say, this is going to be a tax relief. So, is it, or is it not? That's the thing we have to put in the wordage. You can't say that it's going to be tax relief, but you don't really know that that's what's going to happen when the vote comes in. So, that's how the wordage has to be. If it's going to be for tax relief, then that's what you're campaigning, that that's what it's going to be for. If it's going to be for marketing, if it's going to be for parks and rec, it's going to be for whatever. But so far, what I've seen in these last two meetings is, we just want the money, and then we'll figure it out later. So, how is a voter going to vote for that?
Yeah, I understand.
Because you just said that when I was walking away. You said, that's tax relief. You said it twice.
Well, it's, it, I don't, if I did say it that way, I apologize, that's not quite what I mean. So, the town has to raise a certain amount of money in order to make our budget every year. And right now, we raise 100% of that money from property taxes. And what I have been trying to say in the past, and believe I've been saying, but maybe not, is that if we had another source of revenue, less money would have to be raised directly from property taxpayers, and some other money would come in from, from another, from another source. So, it would still be a tax. I, I admit it's complicated. I admit there are ramifications for a lot of different people. But the bottom line is, should, should the property taxpayers pay for everything? And there's a case for that. Or should the property taxpayers split that cost in some way with a, with another form of tax? So, and I, I was going to leave this to the end, but because it's right on your point, Ryan, I've been asked to read a letter that a constituent sent in, and he says, as you know, I watch the bottom line pretty carefully, but I surely realize that it is expensive to run the town fairly and effectively, and when properly justified. I can and do support requests for additional funds, but this should be done through the normal budgeting process and through a vote. I would only support a local options tax if those proceeds were used to reduce the property tax burden. I would oppose it if any portion of the proceeds were used for special projects, whatever they may be. There is no question that the town has special projects that may have merit, or that extraordinary circumstances sometimes justify extraordinary expenses. If that's the case, then let the select board justify those extra expenses and put them in the overall budget, and let the voters decide every year. That, that is what the select board is elected to do. So, that's, I mean, I apologize if I've misconstrued things a little bit, but this kind of reflects how I'm feeling about it. So, anyway, Nancy.
Hi, Nancy White. I want to repeat what I said the last couple of times. Since the options tax was put in the charter two years ago, we never had any doubt it would be on a ballot. You've had two years to get all of the details, all of the information out into the community. Here we are, a month before voting, you're talking about getting more information from other towns. Who in their right mind would vote to give you a million dollars and not know exactly where the money's going to go? I keep hearing about property relief. Some of this money will be used for projects and programs that most citizens aren't going to agree with, that we wouldn't want to have the budget to begin with. So, again, I think this is, this has been nothing but smoke and mirrors. I, I'm pretty sure it's going to get buried, and I hope it gets buried, particularly the way that you've gone about it over the past two months.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry about that, but thank you for your comments. Other, other, come on up.
I'm Eric Peterson. I agree it should be put on the ballot. I would just ask, I, I think what Lynn said is extremely important. It's easy to talk about a million dollars if all four of those taxes go through. Without one of them, it's a much smaller amount of money, and a lot of, whether you want property tax relief or other projects, those just aren't going to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Betsy Greenawall. I'm a resident of Bennington and a business owner. This is just for the public's knowledge. No one's spoken about the admin fee. We don't get 100% of that local tax. We get 70%, and the state gets 30%. So, I just want to make sure that people are aware of that for education purposes. Not sure if that would even be on the ballot, but I think it's a key point, that we don't get the full 100%.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Stu, may I, Betsy, don't run away. That 30% that goes to the state also goes into, what's the program?
Goes into the pilot program, which is a program where the state reimburses communities that host state offices and state lands. So, some of those funds would actually come back to us again in another way.
That's good, but I'm just, just this point, I wanted to put out there.
Sure. It's an important point.
In fact, just to clarify, the monies that we're talking about are based on the 2019 fiscal year information provided by the Vermont Department of Taxes. The 1.2 some-odd million is the 70% of what would be generated by the taxes. It, it does discount the 30% that would go to the state.
Can I just-
Good point, Betsy. Yeah, go ahead.
Has everyone-
Yeah, let's, why don't we, why don't we just, if we can, I want to make sure to give everybody a chance to-
Yeah, I was, that's why I was going to wait.
Okay, great. Other, other thoughts from the, from the audience? Okay, so maybe you get your chance now?
It's a super quick question. What are the sales tax rates in New York and Massachusetts? New York is 8%, right?
Don't ask me.
It's-
The state sales tax is 4%. The local municipalities add typically 2, 3, 4% on top of it.
Okay. And what's Massa-
Typically, it's 70%.
And that's New York. And is Massachusetts about the same?
Six points. Six now.
Six point something.
Okay. I was just curious.
Donald?
Yeah.
Are you free to identify the writer of, of the letter? Or- Yeah, I suppose I should. It's Jim Hurst. Okay. Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was a well-written, it changed my mind, changed the way I was thinking about things a little bit. I had been thinking that if we, if we did do this, we should be setting up designated locations for the money to land, so that voters would know that some of the money was going to go to recreation, some of the money was going to go to debt retirement, some of the money was going to go to whatever it is, but, but marketing. But Jim's point is that that's why boards are elected, and if people disagree with the way the money's being spent, the move is to elect a new board. And so, to tie people's hands, to tie future board members' hands by putting the, by creating this tax and then putting the money into designated pots, is at some level not giving future board members a chance to adapt or change direction or-
React.
Correct.
However, however, it does feel like we would want to have conversations during budget season every year about where that money is likely to go. I really don't want it, I don't want that to be on the ballot, because it feels to me like, one, it ties our hands if something comes up that we need it for, an opportunity or a disaster. And, and I think in just the, the variation we've heard here, there's some people who are saying, if it's not going to marketing, then I'm not in favor of it. Other people saying, if it's not going to property reduction, I'm not tax reduction, I'm not in favor of it. like, one, it ties our hands if something comes up that we need it for, an opportunity or a disaster. And, and I think in just the variation we've heard here, there's some people who are saying, if it's not going to marketing, then I'm not in favor of it. Other people saying, if it's not going to property reduction, I'm not tax reduction, I'm not in favor of it. And it feels like then it muddies the water because then you're not just voting on what are the kinds of option taxes you would like, but also you have, it's a twofer. You have to be able to say, yeah, I like the alcohol tax and I like what you'd be doing with it. And I think that's, like, you can't, you can't vote on something like that. But it does feel like the, we are all elected and, you know, a third of us are up for vote every single year. And that is the opportunity for us to be saying during budget season, here's where we see this money being well-spent. And if the taxpayers don't like it, then like, then you need different representation. I mean, I think that's how that works. But I, you know, I do think we need to have four, four different votes, although I totally agree with Lynn and Eric's point that without the retail sales tax, the amount of money that's brought in is greatly reduced. And I do think the exemptions that are in here really reduce the aggressive nature of this tax. Because clothing, I mean, you know, basically everything but hot tubs.
Everything you need is exempt.
Yeah, and a refrigerator, which you don't buy that often. So it feels to me like there's been a lot of thought on what is exempt under the retail tax. And we are, that is where we are the hub, right? People come to Home Depot, they go to Walmart, they're buying those bigger items, and that is where, that is where the money is coming from. And that is how we are really broadening out the group of people who are helping to pay for the services we provide to the greater community. So. I just feel like we have a lot more to learn. Well, we will always have a lot to learn. And the community to wrap their brains around this, there's so much more that will be presented. And this is just skimming the surface and getting it on the ballot. Then, you know, the next step is going to be really drilling down and understanding what this will do.
Well, look, just to be clear, we don't have to put this on the ballot.
That's true.
We don't have to put this on the ballot this year. This is, this, the question of putting it on the ballot comes hand in hand, I think, with the fact that we are struggling to keep the tax rate down. And part of the reason why we're struggling is because there's so many cost increases that we cannot control, like health insurance. And this is one thing we felt that we could offer to local property owners that might be, might offer some relief. Now, if we feel like it's rushed and we feel like it's not time for it.
I wasn't saying that at all.
We could put this off and we could decide to do it next year.
No, I'm excited.
Or not.
I'm really excited to learn.
Okay. I misunderstood you.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm saying that I think it's going to be pretty amazing, the things that we find out between now and.
So Mr. Chair, I don't want to interrupt you, but in the effort of.
Well, you just did.
I know, I'm sorry. I heard that you were excited about putting it on the ballot. I would like to at least test whether we're ready to vote for a particular way of putting it on the ballot. And that would be the second of the two options that were presented to us, which is a vote, I realize this is not what everybody would want, a vote on each one of the option taxes separately.
I think that's what everybody.
There are two versions in our package.
Yeah, I know. But I think that we've all.
Well, I'm making a motion that we do that. I don't think everybody did.
Yeah, let's get chatting here. So I just want to make a comment before the motion, sorry. Because I know some people expressed putting in the wording, like breaking up buckets or percentages or allotments. But Stuart, correct me if, that becomes restricted funds then if it's in a vote that way by the voters? And the only way to change that would be another public vote, right?
That's correct.
So, I mean, I agree with some people in saying that there should be designated ways, but it really handcuffs a board to say, I mean, if we put $500,000 a year into something, you know, recreation, and then we want to change that percentage in future years, we'd have to do another whole vote. And I just think that really is restrictive. And it also complicates the wording. And I agree that it should be concise and short, not too much editorializing.
Donald?
Yeah, Stuart.
What some communities do is, on an annual basis, the select board sits down at public meetings and discusses how the monies would be used. Rather than tying this board and future board's hands by specific wording on a ballot, every year, the board has to sit with the public and talk about what's important to us this year. We anticipate receiving 1.2 million dollars. How do we want to spend it this year? And that way, it gives you the opportunity and the flexibility to perhaps in a given year, spend more on marketing if you have in fact decided what your marketing approach is and how much it's going to cost you. Or if you have a major infrastructure project and you don't want to go to the voters and ask the property taxpayers to pay that cost, you could say, this year, we're going to do this project. And the one that comes to mind is the Community Build Park, which is an over $100,000 replacement project. You could do that with these funds, as long as you don't, you're not tied down to where you can only commit certain dollars.
It does feel that we, yeah, that there's a sort of leaving flexibility open for the future board. And I can't remember the gentleman's name, but there was somebody who spoke at the last meeting.
Father Dana?
No, Brant Young. And his, mostly he was not in favor of, he just said we had to find other ways to raise taxes. But he also said, as I recall, for example, it was a real priority of him that we shouldn't be paying interest on, when we buy a vehicle, we shouldn't be paying interest on things. So if he got elected and he got on the board, it might be a priority for him to try to pay down the debt on which we're paying interest. And that, and that might be something which would then be, because he would be the elected official making the decision, that might be something that would become a priority for him. So I feel like for us to say, for us to etch in time how this money should be spent isn't right. That if we're going to leave it to the voters, we need to leave it to the voters now, and we need to leave it to the voters in the future.
I'd like to add just one point to what Stu said with respect to flexibility. If we codify in this upcoming vote where the money's going to be spent, we're stuck. But leaving the flexibility to let the voters and the townspeople come before us at a select board meeting and identify some of the goals and desires in real time is, would be a true demonstration of democracy in action.
Matt, come on up.
I just have a question. With the discussion that I'm hearing up there, I mean, it's like seven weeks till this gets voted, right? So why we, like, I know it's not just now, it's probably been a couple of weeks, but why, with all the discussion up here, why are we just hearing about it? Why isn't this, why aren't we talking about this a year?
I can answer that.
You know, and Jim, I agree with you when you say you don't want to be stuck, but I think people are nervous about that. I think people are nervous that it's just going to be over there and that we won't have a say where the money goes, you know?
Well, we're not going to be doing this behind closed doors. It's going to be in an open session. And people will have every opportunity to say, no, you're not spending it there. And I'll give you the answer to, you know, why it took so long. First of all, every 10 years, the state requires each town to examine their charter. And we, over an 18-month period, about three years ago?
No, not even.
Yeah, two years ago.
Two years ago. We formed a committee and they rewrote essentially the charter. So this didn't just happen. And this past year, in the legislature, it had to be approved by the Government Options Committee, or, yeah, Operations Committee. And if they said it wasn't going to happen, it wasn't going to happen. And there was, it almost didn't happen. And as a matter of fact, for all intents and purposes, they rewrote their charter. And almost, we almost, they almost sent it back to us. And so we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So I just want to be clear to you and to the public, this did not happen overnight.
I think it feels rushed. It feels rushed to me. It almost feels rushed to you guys. I mean, you guys are there having a discussion, a debate, and what you're about to vote on. So I just, I just want, thanks for answering.
Sure.
You know, Matt, I'd have to say, I understand your feelings on this. And I think Nancy also expressed, you know, it feels like it's coming on fairly quickly. But perhaps for us, we've been thinking about it for a long time. And we, every year, we spend so much time in these budgets. We spend so much time trying to figure out what we can do to make it better for property taxpayers that, you know, there's probably an element of us not communicating what we're struggling with enough on this. And I think, I think you've probably gone to something. So Lynn, go ahead.
So I said I was a strong proponent of this, but I actually did misunderstand what I think some of you misunderstood. Don, when you're saying that this would be potentially, like, our $13 million budget is still a $13 million budget, it's just it comes from another source. And I've always looked at this as an incremental pot of money. And so for me to vote for yes for this and to be a really strong advocate of this is that it's something big that we can do for this community. And so why can't it be a mix? Why can't it be 50% goes to, I don't know what the percentages are, but X percent to property tax reduction, which even though we own four properties, I am, I don't care about the property tax reduction. I care about everything that goes into making this town a better town. And so if it's a little bit in property tax, a little bit in marketing, recreation, whatever that is, and then a little bit that's discretionary, you know, that might work too. But to vote for it, to just say that it's just going to basically make our budget whole is a different conversation than we're going to come up with this pot of money so that we can, you know, be more of a Manchester Woodstock of Stowe, you know, these other communities.
So before you leave the podium, Lynn, you know, we're struggling with a kind of a finer point here, but how much do we earmark essentially? If this was to go through, how much would it be earmarked by vote? Or how much would it be left up to the annual budgeting process and the elected board at the time? And I think that's, that's something which is not obvious to me, what the answer to that is. I could almost see, and this is a personal preference, but I could almost see if we're going to pick one thing that we were going to designate funds for, I could imagine that the people who are going to get hit by this tax might be the retail people, the restaurant people, the hoteliers and the bars. And I could imagine that they might want to know that there was a certain amount of marketing going to happen for our community so that, okay, we're paying this extra 1% tax, but what we want is, we want the town to double down on getting people here and getting people into our businesses. And, you know, I know that's kind of what you've been saying for quite a while. So I'm not suggesting to this board that we designate money for that, but that's the place I come closest to feeling comfortable tying future select board hands.
Well, and I agree with that. And obviously, you know, I am a business owner, and so I do believe in that part of it. But the other part of it is, to what Bruce was saying, that not everyone is a property tax owner in town. And so that's the way to make it a little more fair because, and I guess I disagree and I agree with you, Bruce, because I disagree in that how hard everyone's going to be hit because food, clothing, motor vehicles, fuel oil, I mean, all of your basic essentials, except for maybe diapers and toilet paper, are pretty much covered. Their medications are covered. So I feel like that's a good step in the right direction there. But then that's a way, by investing back in the community, is a better way to make it fair for everyone versus just me, who's a property tax, or a property owner. I mean, it should go to everyone, whether they're a property owner or not. And by investing in our community, doing something big like Jonah alluded to, that makes it better for everyone who lives here. So just my two cents.
Okay. Thank you. Matt is itching to get to the mic. So we're going to have, we can't hold him back.
Matt Harrington with the Bennington Regional Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to reiterate, Lynn, and a couple of weeks ago, we formed about half a dozen or over a dozen businesses that met with Shannon and John Shanahan of the Better Bennington Corporation. So that was really what came about of that. And Jeannie, you were there, you know, really where we moved from divergent thinking to convergent thinking was, the businesses sounded like, and I don't want to speak for all of them, but it sounded like they would be okay with this if they knew it was going to not only property tax relief, but that portions of it. And again, you know, Donald, to your point, I don't know what that, that looks like in terms of a pie chart, but I think it's probably discoverable. I don't think that that's, we could talk to a bunch of towns that are doing it and saying, which portion do you set aside? But I think the businesses swallowed it better when it was made for things that could relieve all people of Bennington, as well as some dreaming as well, like Jonah said. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Chad, so if we warn, or if we vote on this on the ballot tonight, we have two public meetings prior to the election to discuss.
Yes. So one thing we were, well, we'll have three, we'll have two regular select board meetings and we have an opportunity, it's a federal holiday, but we have an opportunity to.
February 17th, the room has been reserved.
So we have an opportunity to do a meeting just on this subject.
So if we, I guess my thought is, and I think this would help some people, if after our number of public meetings, could we as a board then make a motion saying, if this were to pass, this would be the percentage based on impact from those meetings or emails or letters? I think that would help some people with the vote, have a comfortable, and then maybe after that, we could say every, and then re-up annually.
Yeah, the only problem with that is you don't know which ones are going to pass.
Well, but I'm talking about a pot. I'm not talking about, I'm saying the money that comes in, if we were to say annually, the last meeting in March, we set a goal set by the board, that way the board sets it. I really, I'm hearing a lot of people want to know, hey, I want to know where my money's going. I think we'd be foolish to put it out there without saying where the money's going. And we can up it, and it's a board vote. We don't want to take a motion.
I think I could talk about Lynn. I'd like to do it during budget when we're having those conversations anyway, but.
Maybe, so maybe after that's annually in January, but I think before this first, before it's the vote, it has to happen before the vote. So I would say, at the conclusion of the public meetings, the board make a motion.
Right. What we couldn't do is put it on the ballot.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying it's a board vote, but we'll take input over the next month.
How we would use it.
And how, this is how we'll use it, and then re-up annually at our January budget meeting.
Also, you know, this money is not coming immediately. It's quarterly. Right. So we, not that we shouldn't do our best to possibly figure all that out, but we do have time.
Isn't the first, when did the first check come in July?
Quarterly.
Actually, the tax would be implemented effective July 1.
Oh, definitely.
So the first quarterly payment wouldn't come until the end of September.
It's still going to be important for the voters.
I think, I actually think that's a great idea because it commits this board, I'm sorry, Chad, did I scare you with that one? It's kind of an elliptical idea.
Yeah, I knew I'd get crazy.
But I think it would commit this board to how it wants to spend the money that we receive.
Quarterly.
And it may be changed come next January because there will be a new board. But it does give people some direction after all of the input that you receive.
Giving directions is fine, and I think leaving the process up to democracy is also important too. So that might be the hybrid we're looking for a little bit.
It's disgusting. Oh, it's looking at three years.
It's good.
It's good. All right, other thoughts? Rose, come on up.
I think it's easy for somebody to say they can afford to lose money, that has money. That's not an option with somebody that don't have it. Does that not register in their head? If I told you what I lived on in a month, you would be surprised. And that this, anybody that can say, gee, I can lose money, well, I need to come back and do something to help somebody that can, is ridiculous.
Come on up.
Hi, Heather Hassett. I own businesses here in town with my husband, Ryan. I, first of all, I agree with everything that Jonah said and much of what Bruce said as well. And I likened it actually in a conversation that I was talking to Jonah about, if I have six hours on a Tuesday, then I'm not working. I can do my laundry and my dishes and dust my floors or whatever, and two days later, I've got to do my laundry and my dishes and dust my floor. But if I take that six hours on a Tuesday that I have and I do something different, I paint a room, or I do some landscaping in my yard, I'm not only improving my property value, but I'm doing something that makes me feel better about living in my home. And Bennington is my home. And so as a multi-business owner and someone who's going to be really impacted as far as I can't put my price of my muffin up anymore because people don't have any more money, I am actually in support of this tax, but I have to know that some of that money that's being spent is going to make my home a better place. being spent is going to make my home a better place. It's going to be that big project, that's something that brings people that aren't coming here, here, to spend some more money so that my local people who maybe can't spend as much money with me anymore are still able to come, and they're able to spend some money, but they're also able to enjoy some of the fruits of that, not being able to come and buy a muffin from me, but they can go to the park, or they can go to an event. Their property taxes are maybe being offset because maybe we have some more people moving into town, or maybe we have some more people coming here and doing things. It's really important to me as a business owner to know that a portion is going to marketing particularly, a portion is going to, you know, parks and rec, and maybe then there's a portion that goes that's just completely discretionary, but that's talked about. And annually, like Chad said, what's wrong with saying, okay, annually, we revisit this, and because the priorities shift, right? If I have six hours on a Tuesday, one day, maybe it's that I'm going to paint that room. Six hours on a different Tuesday, maybe I'm going to put a garden in. So those priorities will change and shift, and I get to make that decision. I think it's important for you guys to be able to make that decision, but it has to be specific as far as a percentage, a percentage, a percentage, not just a free-for-all.
So before you leave the mic, Heather-
Sure.
Thank you for your good thoughts, but I'm going to close, citizens comment on this at this point. But I really am interested in this notion of, are we rushing it? Is this, is this something that we should not be allowing the voters to think about right now? Or is this something that we should take to the voters? It feels to me, feels to us, I think, that we have time to have a community conversation about this, but I have heard other perspectives tonight that we might not have time for that. So what's your opinion?
You know, I'm torn on that a little bit. I mean, I do think it feels a bit rushed to this woman's point, like, you know, there was some time, and this is sort of where we're first hearing, I mean, not where we're first hearing about it, but I think in general, public. But like to your point, Jeannie, I called Rutland. I called them, and I said, hey, how's this working there? And I had a conversation with one of the guys, and one of the guys is coming down and talking to me at my business. Like, I don't think that that was that hard, and, you know, honestly, it wasn't. I picked up the phone. I did reach out to North Adams, I haven't heard back from them yet, but I also think it's really important to hear sort of apple-to-apple conversations, right? Us in Rutland, us in North Adams, not us in Manchester. That's apples and oranges.
Yeah, Rattleboro is more interesting, and maybe Wilmington.
Yeah.
But just to be clear about something, Bennington has, you think that Manchester is, you know, this golden cow, golden cat. We have higher grocery retail sales than Manchester. That's a fact.
Right. But to Jonah's point, where are those sales coming from? Coming from people who live here, or people who are coming through here? And we don't really have a way-
We're a hub, remember. Bennington is a hub.
So let's not debate this too.
Yeah. So, but to your point, Donald, I mean, I think, I think that I am strongly in favor of having meetings. You said there's an opportunity for three meetings, one of which would be specifically about this, and using a variety of ways to get out to people. The people that were here from MSK, right, they did all of this stuff and got like a 50% rate of return, which is pretty good. But I think getting that information out to people in a variety of ways, not just, you know, a little square in the banner, or one kind of thing.
I'd love to maybe talk to you afterwards or at some other point about your ideas on that. You know, I think it's something, as I say, we don't have to do anything. This can just keep being a property taxpayers' burden, you know, and we could keep going like that. We don't have to do anything here. But if you think there might be an opportunity for a conversation, I'd be interested to talk to you about-
I'm personally for the 1%. It has to be designated, can't just be a free-for-all.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your thoughts.
You know, you want to call, and then just real quickly, because the discussion of this being rushed keeps coming up. A lot of these people that spoke this evening were at the little meeting of, a sampling of business owners. It's still six weeks away. We've all become educated on this subject, and pretty well-educated within a few days. So every voter in Bennington has six weeks to be educated in every single detail. If you're not going to do it in six weeks, you're not going to do it in two years. So if the board decides, let's put it on the ballot, get the information out there, there's plenty of ways for people to gather that information if they're that concerned and want to vote intelligently for it. We have now six weeks to brush up on how we vote.
I couldn't agree with you more. The voters are smart, they can figure this out. But John, before you leave, the last thing I want to know from you is, you talked to all those business owners, is it, did you get a sense from them that they felt it would be better to consider them as a bunch? Or did you get a sense from them that they should be considered as individual for individual potential taxes?
You heard from all of them, most of them are here this evening, and a lot of them, I'm glad they spoke, which is one of the reasons I didn't get up there. I had a quick recap, but Shannon already provided that. Consensus, yes, break it down to give people the option. The biggest concern is the way it's spent. They want that money to be an investment in the community, and even the Vermont Chamber of Commerce warns that it can disappear if it just goes to property tax reduction. You get used to that, and then two, a couple of years later, your property taxes are going up because it's included in what you're collecting anyway. And it's all, it just, it becomes invisible. But your investment in the community is what makes a difference, not only to market, to bring more people and more money to Bennington, but invest in making us a much better destination so that when we do market to people, they have something better to find, and we're the ones who benefit from all of that. More money in our businesses and a better community will benefit. It's really kind of black and white. You know, 20 communities in the state of Vermont, they all voted it in, nobody's rescinded it, nobody's saying, oh, it's a horrible idea, because they could just vote it out.
Thanks, John. I'm going to, although we've cut off, although we've cut off the public comment on this, I'd like to ask our town staff if they have anything they'd like to add to this.
[inaudible].
Sure.
It's great to hear so much feedback from the community. The one thing I would add, I think, as I'm listening to everyone, it feels to me that I think one of the reasons it might feel rushed is because it's like we're trying to figure out what to do with the money right now. Every town that I've looked at has put it more open-ended on the ballot as in, should we pass a local option tax, whether it's lumped or broken out? And then they've given, you know, opportunities for the community to then meet with their governing body and decide. So if we think of it that way, as really we're just deciding, should we put this on the ballot? We're not rushing right now to know exactly how that money was spent. We have mechanisms to do that. And I think what we're hearing is that people want to know what those mechanisms are. The more that we can talk about those in the, in future public meetings, the better.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good, good closing.
What information is on, or is there no information on the website yet? Is that, is that accurate?
The information that's on the website is the same as the handoff.
Okay. So that's available right now on the website for people, and it has the exemptions and what actually would be included?
Jeannie, I'd like to pivot this conversation if we could to a board conversation on this idea of whether or not, number one, are we prepared to do this this year? And if we are, what would we like to do for a ballot? Would we like to bunch them or separate them?
Separate them.
And I'm in the bunch category, but it sounds like most of you are in the separate category. Where are you, Chad?
I would support both. So it's hard to say both.
Where's Bill Skelly when we need him? I know.
Can I, can I just, I was going to try to do this before. I, you know, making a motion doesn't cut off debate, it just focuses it. That's, so I was going to make a motion that we put on the ballot, the Article III that separates out each of the four local option tax options, a vote on each. It's, it's the second version of, that we receive.
So that's my-
If I have a second, that's my motion.
Motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been seconded.
What's your, what's your argument for lumping it together?
Well, I'm a little bit with Lynn. It feels to me like what this is, to me, I don't want to be too abstract about this, but for me, what it is, is almost a philosophical vote, whether or not all of the burden of running a town, of running a municipality should be on the backs of the property taxpayers, or whether it should be split with other forms of revenue. And to my way of thinking, they should be split. It should be split. And I see, I see the options tax as being a cluster of fair ways to divide that burden, which otherwise falls entirely to property taxpayers who have no recourse in the paying of that tax.
Vote down the budget.
Yeah.
Except vote down the budget, right.
And replace any of us.
That's right.
Can you, can you speak a little bit more to why separating them out doesn't, I mean, you could actually, if you, if you believed what you just said, you could actually accomplish that by voting for all four.
I could, but I do feel-
So that's, that to me is the question.
Feel like that what, you know, so what, the voter's going to, I may be wrong about this, but it looks to me like you're, if you were to look at this ballot item, you would say, how do I feel about a meals tax? Oh, maybe I could go for that. How do I feel about a rooms tax? Oh, it doesn't affect me. How do I feel about an alcohol tax? Oh, I don't really drink. How do I feel about a sales tax? Oh, I buy stuff. I don't want to vote for that. So, you know, if, I'm hoping that everybody will do a lot more research and do a lot more thinking about what this really means. And I think we can trust that people will, but that would be, that would not seem like a unlikely way for people to vote on this. So maybe that's the way to, maybe that's the way to do it. But I, to me, they kind of come as a package.
Okay.
But I guess I'm not, that's not the only way to do it. So I'm not, I'm not, that's not a hill for me to die on.
How have most other towns done it? Do you have any, does anyone have any research on that? Broken out?
Broken down.
Broken out?
And I think we've heard pretty strongly from the public that breaking it out is, I would hope that people would vote for all four, but, and I certainly will, but I feel like the public has been pretty clear about wanting to have that choice.
Yeah, and if we're treating this as a referendum, and we're really truly curious about what does the general public think, I suppose the best way to do that is to parse out the options.
And let's just say two of them don't pass, two do, then can you come back next year and try again on those two that failed?
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and you know, to Chad's point, I mean, it, there's, depending on what passes, that will have some, that will, that will determine what we have money to do. Because if the retail sales tax doesn't pass, then we don't have a whole lot of money to play with, because that's where the bulk of the money is. And, you know, and so it really is going to impact our conversation.
And if I follow Chad's suggestion correctly, and I, I like what he was suggesting, that review, I mean, for this year anyway, would take place prior to the vote. And if the public felt persuaded by that conversation and by our vote, then that would be enough, that would be persuasive of the public. I think the way you just said it, Donald, which is to, if this really is a referendum where we trust the voters to make their decisions, the way to, the way to really do that, and I understand the risks, but the way to really do that is to make it separate.
Yep. I, I'll move my stake.
But what Shannon was saying is, we shouldn't, we don't need to feel, if people are feeling very rushed, and some people clearly are, then maybe not rushing to decide where to spend the money right now is not the right thing to do. I don't know. Shannon was saying we have time to do that afterwards. And maybe that would relieve some of the, I don't know, it's kind of like a double-edged sword, I guess. Some people want to know, and other people, other people feel rushed, and like, wait, let's just deal with that when we see where we are.
Well, so I think we've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, sort of keeping the board focused on, on this, this motion. If we, if we want tonight, we can take a vote on this, and we can decide whether or not it goes in the ballot. And then it's up to everybody in this community to have conversations and decide whether it's a good idea.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
Do we want to read the article for the people that don't have it?
Sure. Why don't you read the, why don't you read the one that you got that has everything separated out?
You as in me?
Chad.
Chad.
I'll do it. Article III.
That makes-
Shall the voters assess a 1% local options tax as provided in Section 511A of the Bennington Town Charter? Number one, a 1% meals tax. Number two, a 1% rooms tax. Number three, a 1% alcoholic beverage tax. And number four, a 1% sales tax. And those are all yes or no votes.
There's a yes, no after each one of those.
Right. So it's four separate votes.
One and the ultimate winner.
The alternate one was simply, shall the voters assess a 1% local options tax as provided in Section 511A of the Bennington Town Charter? A 1% meals tax, a 1% rooms tax, 1% alcohol beverage tax, and 1% sales tax, yes or no? So lumpers and splitters? I think the splitters are winning tonight. Any more board conversation? I think I'd like to call the vote then. All in favor of putting it on the ballot with the four options broken out, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. So one opposed. Any abstentions? I didn't hear any, so. Okay. So that, so then, before we leave this topic, we have upcoming meetings, and then we would like to schedule, we have this room reserved for, what's the date, Stuart?
February 17th.
So Monday, February 17th, which is President's Day. Now that, we recognize that for some people that'll be a problem, for other people, it may be an opportunity. But Monday, February 17th, and what time? 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
And that's for the dedicated-
That's a conversation only about the, the options tax, and presumably we'll have some people here that can, that can frame up the conversation for us, right, Stuart? Talk a little bit about what that looks like. Maybe some people from other communities or something like that.
And then we'll have public comments-
Certainly comments from other communities.
On the 10th and the 24th.
Okay. What's that?
And they'll have public comments. It'll be on the, it'll be on the agenda.
Yes.
The 10th and the 24th.
And it'll be on, and it'll also be on the agenda on the 10th and the 24th.
Okay.
On the agenda. Good.
On the agenda, as an agenda item.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So two warned conversations at regularly scheduled meetings, and we'll have a designated night.
And town meeting too.
And then, and then town meeting too.
Donald, just, I will be absent on the 17th. I can try to watch a recap from sunny Florida, but I will not be able to attend, so I'm just not sure we'd have a quorum.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. That is, if anyone else cannot be here on that night, speak now or forever hold your peace.
What's the date again?
17th.
17th.
It's President's Day.
It's President's Day. We need a quorum.
I believe so.
Okay. Jeannie?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, thank you, and thank you for the people who participated in this conversation.
That was really great.
Thank you all very much. Not easy, but really appreciate your, your thoughts on that. We're going to move on to the annual town meeting warning. Stuart?
Yes, you've now, tonight, basically set the two articles that were potentially questionable, and that is the lead line, lead service line removal project, and you've established the question on the local option tax. The rest of the articles are pretty similar. Article I, generally being the appropriations that, and establishing reserves. Article II is the lead service line. Article III, we've just talked about. Article three, we've just talked about. Article four is the question of whether or not the town of Bennington will join the Southern Vermont Communications Union District, which we agreed to do some time ago. And then the remaining articles are all of the agency requests. There are a total of 16 articles to be voted upon and that includes all of the agencies that have been placed in the ballot, on the ballot by the board, as, as well as the two libraries and rescue squad, the Village of North Bennington and Lake Perrin, that have been placed within the budget itself.
Okay, any comments on the ballot as circulated?
And this, the funding allocation here, this, this is just for our?
Yes.
Okay, because I wasn't sure why, why Brock didn't carry all the way over to the, so I didn't know if the total was actually a little higher.
Well, actually, it's, yes, that, that should carry over.
Okay, so.
Because that was what they got last year.
But that's, that's the ballot.
Sixty-seven, fifty?
Yep.
I have a question. I'm not sure if this is the time to ask it, but I know in the past that we had requested that the, not the agencies that were requesting funding come to town meeting to give a very short presentation, and I would really like to see that happen this year.
Okay, yeah.
You know, three minutes.
I think we got a lot out of that personally. I think it was a really.
They all didn't come.
Well, it was an opportunity for them to make the case to the public of, that the public should support their ballot item, and I think it's a good thing to request again.
Right, so I don't know who communicates that.
Stuart, did you do a formal request last year? How did that work?
Last year, I think we did do a formal request. This year, we made it a condition of the application.
Oh.
They are expected to be at town meeting.
Well, it, yeah, I mean, it's not a condition, but.
Well, right.
Could we, could we invite them again?
Let's, let's send them a reminder.
Yeah.
Let's send them a reminder.
Certainly.
Our expectation is that.
I'll do my best invitation.
Thank you very much.
Strong, strong language.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this ballot and for the town meeting day?
So moved.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation, any further conversation on this? Okay, all in favor of 2020 annual town meeting ballot as written, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's unanimous.
I'm going to circulate that for your signatures.
Thank you. Stuart, you've got some liquor license access for us?
Yes, we have two first-class renewals, five second-class renewals, and one third-class renewal before you. These just require your signatures since they are all renewals, so I will circulate that document for signatures as well.
Okay, moving on to item number 10, the manager's report. Almost there, people?
I will start out by announcing that the Housing Authority has an open seat and has had an open seat for some time now. Sharon Brush, who is now the Vice Chair of the Housing Authority, called me today and asked that I get the word out as best as possible. If people are interested in serving on the Housing Authority, please submit your letter of interest to my office and we will do a future agenda to, to make that appointment. The housing, the federal housing folks have been looking at that vacancy and they are concerned that it's gone out for too long.
Okay.
In action items, you asked us to go back and take a look at the Willow Park Pavilion rental, and staff took that and have brought back to you a proposal that is based on so many dollars per hour for the number of people that are going to be renting it. It doesn't include a security deposit. I'm just asking that this be put on a future agenda, not to make a decision on this tonight, but if you're satisfied with this proposal, then we would move it to the February 10th meeting.
I think it's great.
I think it's great. The only question I had was about the, so, was it, will there be more information about security deposits or is that?
That's right.
Well, we, the security deposit is generally returned. If everything is, is left in good order, they clean up after themselves and they don't leave a, a huge mess.
Okay.
So we will have that then probably on the 10th of February, depending on the length of the agenda, but we know what, what we're working on.
I'm curious how much more revenue will be brought in as compared to?
It's going to be difficult to know, just because we, we haven't been tracking the time that people use the facility. They rent it for the day essentially. If they're only there two hours, they're only there two hours. So we have no way of knowing. Once again, we're, we are, have been working and Shannon has been working on the recreational priorities. We do hope to be able to present this. I originally thought we would try to do it February 10th. We may be pushing that back again because our agendas continue to grow. We've now added the local option tax discussion to the February 10th and 24th, so we may be looking further out on those, but that's the board's determination and we'll talk about that with the Chair and Vice Chair.
Can I ask also, it feels like it's time for the YMCA to come back on, in February?
The YMCA is scheduled for February 10th.
Okay, so they are coming.
That is, that is on my list of future agendas.
Okay.
And I think they'll probably be ready for us. Of note, the, during the construction of the UCS addition for the Head Start program, the overflow pipe from Morgan Spring was barely uncovered in one section, found to be in pretty bad shape. It's been in the ground for 50 years. It's corrugated steel, so it, it obviously has some rust. Part of the damage was caused by the contractor, but we are, we're looking at with our engineers ways that we might be able to replace certain sections of that piping for a relatively reasonable cost during the construction project, so it's done at the same time that everything else is torn up. Waste water treatment facility upgrade continues on pace. I think the major projects will reach substantial completion in February. They will have to come back for punch list items, landscaping cleanup and those kinds of things in the spring when the ground is thawed. And that's all I have.
Can I ask, so the, the packets for the, the agencies that are petitioning will be online so people can look at?
Yes, we'll, we'll upload, we'll upload the, the requirements that were, we were asked of. Some provided more information than we asked for, but we'll get, share information up there.
Thank you, Stuart. So we are looking at a upcoming agenda. Did not get the recreation conversation in. You're talking about, we're talking about March for that maybe. So February 10th YMCA update, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the Y update, the local option tax discussion. I was hoping to have the Armory Town Land Exchange discussion. Small discussion on the Willow Park fees, that seems to be relatively quick. And that's what I have at the present time.
Okay.
I'm sure other things will come up. It doesn't stop.
So that's the 10th. We'll have an options tax meeting on February 17th and then February 24th, we don't have scheduled at this point.
We will have the, we will have a discussion, a public hearing essentially on the lead service line bond question, because that is required by statute.
Okay.
And Shires will be looking for a community development block grant approval by this board for 300 Pleasant Street.
On the 24th?
On the 24th, yes.
For which, what location?
300 Pleasant Street. They're, they're joining, they are buying the property to renovate it and make an additions to it.
Right.
And then working with the Coalition for the Homeless to provide transitional housing for people.
Right. Okay, well, this has been a long but productive meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Is there other business that should come before this board? Chad, why don't we start with you tonight?
Sure. Just want to, to the people that saw the British Invasion over the weekend, Lynn Sweet again did an amazing job. And then tickets went on sale today for another production Cafe Murder. This production is a form of dinner theater. It's actually partnered with the Country Club. And you'll enjoy a delicious meal prepared by the Country Club. And throughout the meal, you'll be treated, the audience will be improv skills by the students and they'll be, basically the audience will be the jury to decide who did the murder. So it sounds very interesting, something unique and different for the students and involving the Country Club. So I think tickets are $35 and went on sale today, so it's worth checking out.
Excellent.
Oh, and it's on the 7th and 8th of February, sorry.
Good little PSA.
Thanks, that's right.
Okay, so also on February 8th, which is Saturday, right? So the Bennington Area Makers is having two Valentine's events. In both cases, it's making cardboard cards and then using LED lights and making your own light-up Valentines. On the 8th, it's from 10 to 12 in the morning on Saturday. It's for families to come and build Valentines. And then on the 12th, there is a similar event, but for adults, for the Shires Young Professionals. And that'll be in the evening on Wednesday, the 12th. So lots of fun, yes.
Jim?
Just one thing that came to my attention. Last week, I got a call from a constituent, pretty upset because she learned from, I don't know who or, she wouldn't tell me, that, there are rumors going around town that the new addition at the rec center is going to be, which is sponsored by UCS, is going to be a drug rehab. Yeah, I'm not kidding you.
Say no.
Huh?
Yes, it's not true.
Right, but it's, it's out there and there's not.
Why not?
Huh?
Why not?
Because it's for children.
It's for children, yeah.
Head start.
I know, that's a valid point, Rose. However, however, if I can finish, it's just, there's not a subtle truth to it. In addition to that, she said that, this woman said that she learned or was told that the UCS addition was taxpayer-funded. It wasn't. It was a federal grant that UCS, that UCS worked hard for and got. So just want to clarify, is that true? All that is true, still?
Yes, that is true, Jim.
Early childhood.
Not going to be any drug rehab there.
No, early childhood.
Well, she said that, you know, she suspected there would be drug sales and drug addicts hanging around.
A lot of people have a lot of fear about these things, but good, good points, Jim.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I'm just reminded, and I want to remind the folks out there that today is the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz. It was, a mentor of mine was among the first, he wasn't at Auschwitz, but he was among the first American soldiers to liberate another one of the concentration camps. It's a sign of the inhumanity of human beings toward each other and I hope that we all remember it so that we never repeat it.
Well, on a lighter note.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.